Beginning in March, the U.S. Census Bureau will invite households across the country to participate in the 2020 census. But what is the census? Simply put, the census is a head count of every person living in the United States. To be sure the government represents the people, the U.S. Constitution requires a population count every 10 years. Ever since 1790, the census has determined the number of seats each state receives in the U.S. House of Representatives. It is, and always has been, a cornerstone of our democracy. We still use it to determine representation, but leaders also use the data to make decisions. Your response helps guide planning for the future of our communities. The 2020 census will help inform decisions on how billions of dollars are allocated annually for critical public services like roads, schools, hospitals and healthcare clinics, fire and emergency response services, and hundreds of other programs. In 2020, for the first time, you'll be able to complete the census online, by phone, or by mail. It asks a few simple questions, like how many people live in your home on April 1st, including their age and sex, and if there are any children living there. You should know that by law, all census responses are completely confidential, and your personal information cannot be shared with any law enforcement agencies. Every person counts, no matter who you are or where you live. So whether your family has participated for decades, or the 2020 census will be your first, we all have a role in shaping the future of our country.
El Paso goes by many names. Sun City, 915. We are known for history, culture, food, and art. In the early 1900s, development and commerce in El Paso revolved around mining and trade. The nationally recognized mission trails are just one example of the many historic sites that portray our region's rich indigenous and colonial history. Since then, El Paso has evolved, and so has its people. We take great pride in nourishing a skilled and capable workforce, with 72% of our population being bilingual. We stay competitive among other large U.S. cities. The region's border location boasts a major trade port. It allows competitive local manufacturers to produce at maximum capacity. Fleet systems are capable of worldwide distribution of parts and products. Our state-of-the-art higher education systems are nationally recognized. The Texas Tech University Health Sciences Center, El Paso, the nation's first comprehensive health sciences institution on the U.S.-Mexico border, provides students the opportunity to become doctors, nurses, and researchers. The University of Texas at El Paso offers 74 bachelors, 74 masters, and 22 doctoral programs. Local government agencies and other economic development organizations help industries become established and expand in our community. The county of El Paso is great for business. But we also keep true to our southern hospitality, with plenty of outdoor recreation options. It's easy to keep active in El Paso. We are constantly looking for new industries interested in expansion. We want to offer our help and support in the process. No matter the name, El Paso is proud, strong, progressive. We are El Paso. Come see what we can do together.
The county has been working closely with El Paso City Health Department to help prevent the spread of respiratory viruses such as the flu and COVID-19. In order to help prevent the spread of all respiratory viruses, it is recommended by health officials to wash your hands often with soap and water for at least 20 seconds. If soap and water are unavailable, use an alcohol-based hand sanitizer. Avoid touching your eyes, nose, and mouth with unwashed hands. Avoid close contact with people at risk. When coughing and sneezing, please cover your mouth and nose with a flexed elbow or use a tissue. If using a tissue, discard immediately into a closed tin. If you have fever, cough, and difficulty breathing, seek medical care immediately. If you have cold-like symptoms, please stay home. Thank you for making this a priority in your personal health and the health of those around
The 2020 census means more to El Paso than you know. It's what helps our community receive funding for food, school, housing, and healthcare programs. Without you, money that helps keep us healthy, educated, fed, and sheltered could disappear. Participate online, by phone, or by mail. Everyone in El Paso County must be counted, even children and babies. Your responses are safe and required by law to be kept strictly confidential. Let's come together and fill out the census. If not, we all lose. Together, fearless, we count.
You are watching the broadcast of the El Paso County Commissioners' Court meetings. Commissioners' Court meetings are held every Monday at 9:30 a.m. on the third floor of the El Paso County Courthouse, located at 500 East San Antonio in downtown El Paso. These meetings are open to the public. The meeting will start momentarily.
Commissioners' Court is meeting in regular open session. Would you please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by an invocation by Pam Ferroni?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated.
Judge, Commissioners, county leaders, staff, and all within the sound of my voice. Yesterday, the President of the United States set the day aside as a day of prayer. In his words, he said, "It is my great honor to declare Sunday, March 15, as a national day of prayer." We are a country that throughout our history has looked to God for protection and strength in times like these. Together, we will easily prevail. Let's continue in that spirit of his call to prayer now. Almighty God, we, your people in El Paso County, humble ourselves before you today. We come in faith, not fear, submitting ourselves to you. Please forgive us, as we have been like sheep and have gone astray. We have walked in our own ways and have not bowed our hearts before you. Now our world seems to be spinning out of control, and our lives have changed drastically in a few short days. We cry out to you to save us. We say with the psalmist David, "The Lord is my shepherd; I shall not lack. He makes me to lie down in peaceful green pastures; he leads me beside the calming waters. He restores my soul; he leads me in paths of righteousness for his name's sake." We confront the foul spirit of fear, and we say with Timothy, "God has not given us a spirit of fear, but of power, and of love, and of a sound mind. We speak peace over our minds; we choose to have a sound mind." Thank you that the perfect love that drove you to the cross is the same perfect love that casts out all fear. Thank you that in your perfect love, you will never leave us nor forsake us. Thank you for our county and city leaders. Give them wisdom and a steady hand as they lead us through these coronavirus-troubled waters. We declare that you will secure El Paso County and that COVID-19 will be a non-event. I speak to you, El Paso County, and I say, "Arise, shine, for your light has come, and the glory of the Lord has risen upon you. For behold, the darkness shall cover the earth, and deep darkness the people; but the Lord will arise over you, El Paso County, and his glory will be seen upon you. In the mighty name of my Lord and Savior, Jesus, amen, and so be it. God bless El Paso, and God bless America."
Thank you, Mrs. Ferroni, and thank everyone that's here today. You all know we're at a critical point in addressing the coronavirus, and we're very well-aligned. We're aligned with the precedent declared, the state declared, and now our own emergency declaration. So I'd like to just, I've been in touch throughout the entire ordeal with the Metro 6, which are the six largest counties and their county judges, and we've sort of adopted a prayer for a pandemic by Cameron Bell, and so I'd like to read it as to what's guiding us as well. "May we who are merely inconvenienced remember those whose lives are at stake; may we who have no risk factors remember those most vulnerable; may we who have the luxury of working from home remember those who must choose between preserving their health or making their rent; may we who have the flexibility to care for our children when schools close, remember those who have no options; may we who have to cancel our trips remember those that have no safe place to go; may we who are losing our margin money in the tumult of economic market remember those who have no margin at all; may we who settle in for quarantine at home remember those who have no home. As fear grips our country, let us choose love. During this time when we cannot physically wrap our arms around each other, let us yet find ways to be the loving embrace of God to our neighbors." I'd like to quickly, and just for the sake of time, I'll read some of the actions that we have taken and some of the things that we're doing as our part as a county. And of course, everything we do is on behalf of Commissioners' Court and the Commissioners, who are very supportive to all the alignments and everything that we're doing out in the community. So I know many of you have been working over the weekend, and we are grateful. With that said, the CDC is advising against gatherings of 50 people or more for the next eight weeks, so I ask that you perhaps sit in a chair away from each other, and we all need to set an example and practice what we preach by greeting each other with an air of five rather than a handshake. I know this may be difficult for us because, given that we have such a warm culture for El Paso. Continue to urge all residents to follow the guidelines below to help prevent the spread of COVID-19. Source, it's www.dshs.texas.gov/. Wash your hands often with soap and water for at least 20 seconds. If soap and water are not available, use alcohol-based hand sanitizers. Avoid touching your eyes, nose, and mouth with unwashed hands. Avoid close contact with people who are sick. Stay home when you are sick. Cover your cough or sneeze with a tissue, then wash your hands. Clean and disinfect frequently touched objects and surfaces. We're really encouraging everyone to call 211-OPTION 6 for any questions, whether you're an agency, an individual, have any kind of questions. That's the best place at this time to, you know, just 211-OPTION 6. As you know, the census is coming up, and there's a lot of collateral things that take place because of our situation, and one of the ones that could be in a vulnerable place is the census. So I'd like to, you know, have discussions with several people on this. The 2020 census is officially underway. Invitations to respond to the 2020 census are arriving in mailboxes, and people can begin responding online, by phone, and by mail. Some households in areas in El Paso County that receive mail in P.O. boxes and have low internet connectivity will receive a paper questionnaire in the first mailing. The numbers in the websites where everyone can respond are my2020census.gov, the number in English line is 844-330-2020, and then for Spanish, 844-868-2020. The U.S. Census Bureau is carefully monitoring the coronavirus COVID-19 situation and will follow the guidelines of federal, state, and local health authorities. The key message right now for everyone with questions about how COVID-19 will affect the 2020 census is that it has never been easier to respond on your own, whether online, over the phone, or by mail, all without having to meet a census taker. Our preparation and contingency plan centers on two key principles. The health and safety of our staff and the public is of the utmost consideration and importance. We must fulfill our constitutional obligation to deliver the 2020 census counts to the President of the United States on schedule, and we must adhere to our core task of counting everyone once, only once, and in the right place. So we're, please, you know, there's no reason, there's some people that feel that an extension is viable, but this is not the right approach. The right approach is to make sure that everyone is counted. So, you know, there's fear out there, there's different reasons why people might not want to participate, there's concerns about people that were hired not wanting to participate at this point, and once again, it's this, you know, we don't want to panic, and we don't want, we don't want to be complacent, and so if we move towards the middle ground, I think we're going to be very successful. We've limited all the nonessential agenda items for today's meeting, and we made the decision to take up, not to take up resolutions today. We have a lot to discuss, and so we'll get started, but just want to, a couple of guidelines. I've been asking every press conference that I've been at for them to listen to our broadcasts, which means that a lot more people will be listening to this, to our Commissioners' Court today. Same thing will happen at City Council tomorrow. So one of the things that I ask as we approach this is that people don't take the comments beyond what they should be, let's stay on point, let's make sure that today is not a day that we're going to try to resolve everything, but that it's a day to guide us going forward. So the more open discussion, the more confusion we might create for the community, so please stay on point, make sure that we understand that today is really a guide going forward, and there's a lot of things that we need to resolve on a daily basis. You know, the media has been excellent, we're trying to get more people to hear what's happening. Talked to the bishop yesterday and talked about, a lot of people aren't reaching, getting the information, so we're trying to do as many PSAs and try to approach our community. But the people that are here, we ask you to encourage others to, you know, stay tuned to the news. They've been extremely good about keeping the integration or the integrity of the information. They're doing a great job for us. As a community, I have no doubt, I've said it over and over, I'm very optimistic of the fact that whether it's how we handle the refugees, how we handled August 3, and now this situation, I still believe that we are role models for the rest of the country in how we do things. I know there's stockpiling, a lot of things, and most of it is caused by lack of information. This is not like a hurricane, or flooding, or any of these events where our supplies are cut off. We have talked and reached out to the Walmarts, the Targets, Walgreens, they're all very well-stocked, and so convey the message that there's no need to do that, and that we can continue as a community in the way, in the exemplary way that we've done so far here in El Paso and in this region. So let's get going in this, in our situation. Thank you for all your assistance, and thank you for conveying the right communication to the rest of the community.
Jessica?
Thank you, Judge. Item number four is the Consent Agenda, composed of items 4A through 4X. For item 4E, we have a correction to read in from the county attorney's office. Item 4E should read, "Approve and authorize the county judge to sign a letter of support and endorsement for the El Paso Sports Commission to seek funding with the Office of the Governor, Economic Development, and Tourism Office to participate in the Events and Trust Fund Program for Funding for the Jackalope Festival to be held on Saturday, September 12, 2020, opinion number 2300264." For item number 4J, we'd like to request for this item be deleted. Item 4J reads, "Approve and authorize the county judge to sign the addendum to ADP Workforce Now Master Services Agreement Contract with ADP LLC from March 2, 2020 through March 1, 2021. Funding is available in SR Election Services Elections Expense, contract number 20200101." Are there any other items that members of the court or public would like to pull for individual discussion?
Move to approve.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. Also for the record, item 4E, the opinion number should be 200264. Item number five resolutions. 5A, approve and adopt a resolution recognizing Mr. Ramon Villarreal for winning the Adán Medrano Legacy Award in film, and for his commitment to rehumanizing immigration, originality, and representing El Paso County nationally and internationally. For this item, we're requesting for it to be deleted.
Yes, so moved.
Second.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 5B, approve and adopt a resolution declaring the week of March 15 through 21, 2020, as Poison Prevention Week in El Paso County, Texas. So we'd like a motion to delete this item.
So move.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number six, public comment. We do have one speaker signed up to speak, Mr. Pierre Andre Uzaga.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Before I get into what I really want to say, I want to talk about the virus really quick. Cleanliness is next to godliness. So we just simply clean our rooms, clean our living rooms, our homes, wash our clothes, wash our hands. We're godly, we're clean, we're healthy. So to everyone at home who's panicking, "Oh my God, oh my God, oh my God," calm down. Pull out the vacuum cleaner, pull out the rig, go outside, pull out all those weeds that are all over the front yards these days, and you'll begin to feel healthy, all right? And that's to the CDC as well. It's all up here, first and foremost, what we put up here. Now, getting into what I have to say... Item 4J reads, approve and authorize the county judge to sign the addendum to ADP Workforce Now Master Services Agreement Contract with ADP LLC from March 2, 2020 through March 1, 2021. Funding is available in SR Election Services Elections Expense, contract number 20200101. Are there any other items that members of the court or public would like to pull for individual discussion?
Commissioners? Move to approve. Second.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. Also for, for the record, item 4E, the opinion number should be 200264. Item number five resolutions. 5A, approve and adopt a resolution recognizing Mr. Ramon Villarreal for winning the Adán Medrano Legacy Award in film and for his commitment to rehumanizing immigration, originality and representing El Paso County nationally and internationally. For this item, we're requesting for it to be deleted.
Yes, so moved.
Second.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 5B, approve and adopt a resolution declaring the week of March 15 through 21st, 2020 as poison prevention week in El Paso County, Texas. So we'd like a motion to delete this item.
Move.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number six, public comment. We do have one speaker signed up to speak, Mr. Pierre Andre Uzarraga.
Good morning.
Before I get into what I really want to say, I want to talk about the virus really quick. Cleanliness is next to godliness. So we just simply clean our rooms, clean our living rooms, our homes, wash our clothes, wash our hands. We're godly. We're clean, we're healthy. So to everyone at home who's panicking, oh my God, oh my God, oh my God, calm down. Pull out the vacuum cleaner, pull out the rig, go outside, pull out all those weeds that are all over their front yards these days and you'll begin to feel healthy, all right? And that's to the CDC as well. It's all up here, first and foremost, what we put up here. Now, getting into what I have to say, for the record, I am Pierre Andre Uzarraga and I'm the founder and chairman of the American Political Party Committee. I am also the 2020 presidential candidate of the American Political Party Committee. And people have been asking, how do we unify ourselves, Mr. Uzarraga? And I come up with the solution, well, I have to sell my interests of the party because essentially I'm trying to Americanize the county of El Paso, state of Texas, the United States federal government, law enforcement, judges, attorneys, Congress, the media, the people. I mean, we need to come together as Americans. Now, for the past six years, I have been punched, literally kicked, my home has been vandalized, I've been harassed, my daughter Riley has been taken away from me, you know, assaults, and there's plenty of fights that I've never even reported to the police because it takes, what, 30 minutes to get to the location? So I had to take care of all these things myself. I came up here with a bag of my clothes from case number 15-087017 and the DA fumbled the ball. So I took care of it myself because I'm an American, I can defend my home, my family, and that's what I did. They're no longer in the area. But there's still other viruses, if you will, in the neighborhood that are trying to infect the neighborhood. They're trying to infect you all. They're trying to infect the media. They're trying to keep us down. When I get down, I get ugly because God wants us to be up. And we don't do that as a government. We don't do that as a people. What I want to offer is my interests. I put in 24,960 hours since September 10, 2013, trying to figure out how to legalize cannabis, which is what brought me up here in the first place, which is why I don't have my daughter Riley, which is why I have all these ridiculous dockets, which is why, you know, weed dealers don't like me because they want to make, you know, their little change or whatnot. They don't, they want to stay on welfare, not go to work legally. That's what's going on in the black market. President don't understand that. I don't think you understand that, sir. I do. I got arrested, I was in handcuffs on Valentine's Day, September, on the 14th, for trying to take out Rose to my daughter at her school. Their sheriff's had me cuffed. December 16th, I got arrested for trying to speak to, to her mother, hey, you know what, cut her some slack, let her visit the other family during Christmas time. Nope, got locked up. Well, if I could simply sell my interests, I deserve to be compensated, ladies and gentlemen. I put up nine, nine executive actions I plan on instilling if one day, God bless us, all of us, to come together and you all elect me as a 46th president. I could take out Bernie, I could take out Joe, that was ridiculous last night. They're talking about this, but I know the Republicans are like, oh, well, we'll do this. Round and round and round we go, infecting ourselves with this virus. So if I could sell my, my shares, if you will, for $2.496 million, I would appreciate that, lump sum, tax free, and a buyout fee at 1.331 so I can at least take home another That one, you can tax me. And I like, again, my daughter, full custody and my custody until she's 21. And in closing, I like all of my, my legalities out of the way so that now FEC can take me seriously because we're not protecting the election commission.
Time.
It's going to get ridiculous. So in closing, I'm not going to go, trying not to go over any further, I'm trying to stay within the guidelines. That's what we need to do. And I'm dead serious, I'm going to make history with your help, ladies and gentlemen. And I'm here busting my tail for each and every single one of you.
Thank you.
In God's name.
Thank you, sir.
God bless us all.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Item number seven, A, presentation postponed March 9, 2020. Present a certificate of recognition and a flag flown over the El Paso County Courthouse to Specialist Desquan Fordham, Combat Aviation Brigade, 1st Armored Division, Fort Bliss, Texas. We'd like a motion to delete this item.
Remove. Second.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number eight, county administration. Discuss and take appropriate action regarding El Paso County's preparation and response for COVID-19.
Judge, Commissioners, I'd like to turn this over to Chris Stathis and Nicole Ruiz, who are going to go over internal planning that the county has been working on for this situation.
Thank you.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. Chris Stathis, your chief information officer.
Morning.
Good morning. Last week, I was asked to help facilitate a team of executives to be able to help respond to this COVID-19 crisis that's currently before us. One of the housekeeping rules is we're not going to, we're going to try and not use the clicker today. We've got a pretty long slide presentation, so our team is going to help us forward the slides. So we're going to try and be verbal today and be hygienic.
Thank you.
So we get the next slide. From that team, what we wanted to accomplish was to, first of all, set out kind of why we existed and what we were going to try and do. First thing we came up with very quickly was a, was a mission statement. And I'll read this out loud, it's to create an aggressive and actionable plans for the county of El Paso to slow the transmission of COVID-19 and reduce the illness and death while minimizing social and economic impacts with an overarching objective to the improvement and testing of our continuation of operation plans, our COOP plans. And our vision was to, for the county to be a leader in effective crisis response. So we started out with that being our vision or our why, why we existed and what we were trying to accomplish. This has very rapidly become less of a planning operation than a response operation. So I can tell you that over the weekend and the team that, that has been assembled is extremely professional, extremely dedicated and have given, you know, everything that they can to try and create the best possible environment that they can. Next slide. The team that we came up with, we separated into five separate teams. So we had a communication group, a public health and safety group, public services group, courts and justice group, and then internal services group. Each of these teams is comprised of the members that you see below. We've already added additional members to that team and I believe this will continue to grow. Our primary motivation was to, to help with coordination, communication and planning for each of these separate, separate divisions. Next slide, please. The last thing that I want to talk about before I turn it over to updates. Oh, go ahead. The last thing that I wanted to discuss was the kind of methods of communication that we established. So the first was critical communications and this is internally. We've established an Everbridge, that's our emergency communication application that we use through the regional 911 system so that we can very quickly and accurately be able to contact the members of the team and anyone else who needs to be on that group. We also have routine internal communications. This is just an internal distribution list that we've created so that we can ease the ad and distribution of information as quickly as possible. We have two public information options. One is critical information. That's going to be information that we believe will come out from the county judge's office as needed in the form of email or press releases. And then routine will be internal emails and, email and press releases from the judge's office as well.
Chris, just a second so we can connect.
So anyways, we have two forms of communication, internal and external, and we have critical and we have routine. And so we've developed platforms to be able to communicate those. And then, and then the ECP, the ECPT team is meeting on a very regular basis. Some of that will be in response to the needs that the court has and the community needs. So we'll remain very pliable and meeting up to daily or multiple times per day as needed. And then lastly, we've implemented a on-demand for the public. That's going to be, we've created a covid19 epcounty.com website, make it really easy for people to be able to find information. Right now, I believe we're directing that traffic to the city's website. They're kind of the consolidator of most of the information, but as things progress, we may actually want to start putting some of our own information as well and we control that. And then lastly, our social media groups are going to also be publicizing both that website and any kind of notices that the county needs to, to get out to the, to the public. And then we have committed to come before you all on a weekly basis or whenever you meet to be able to give you updates as, as appropriate. So next slide. So now Nicole is going to come forward and give you an update on our communication efforts.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Nicole Ruiz with the county judge's office.
Good morning, Nicole.
Yeah, so yesterday, the health department announced that we now have a second presumptive positive case of COVID-19 in El Paso. We do have a representative from the health department and OEM here to provide you with an update. But first, I'd like to update you on what we have done internally. As you know, last week, the county judge issued a local disaster declaration, not only to be aligned with the federal and state levels, but to also take immediate action as a proactive measure. Both the mayor and the judge have held three press conferences so far to keep the public updated. So far, the county has taken the following steps over the past few days. The county has suspended all activities being held at the sports park and at Sky at the park. This includes tournament play and all scheduled events. The county has suspended all work-related child for employees until further notice. The county will be utilizing all electronic and digital methods for conducting public and internal meetings as much as possible. This includes meetings that we have scheduled with consultants, for example, this Thursday for our special session. We're going to be Skyping them in for certain agenda items. The county will be closing senior centers beginning Tuesday, March 17th. All participants are being notified. We've also been working with the council of judges. They've issued a notice to the public. They're taking numerous actions to reduce the impact of the virus on the public by rescheduling and suspending nonessential court proceedings to avoid the gathering of large groups until April 1st. So jury duty has been postponed. The judge has also been in communication with Brian Kennedy with the county sports commission. The, they will be postponing all events beginning as of yesterday, the, for the county Coliseum. The judge, like he said earlier, he's been in communication with the rural mayors, we've been making sure to keep them updated as much as possible. He's been in communication with the Metro 6 county judges and he's also been in communication with our school districts as well, who are, who have extended their spring breaks. And also, I mean, I've been telling this to every department and every meeting, but just so you're aware again, we do have a continuity of operations plan in place for every department and they are ready to go in the event that we have a disruption of services. We're looking at each department's essential function, functions, looking at essential versus nonessential personnel, and we're also making sure that they are good to go in the event that they need to work remotely from home and making sure that they have that technology. Now I'd like to call up a representative from the health department, Fernando Gonzalez, for a quick update. And then followed by Fernando will be Chief Gonzalez from OEM.
Just, just a quick notice, we are really proud of Judge Chu and all the work that she's done and she's been at the press conferences and the relationship that we have with our court system. So we thank you for aligning and the support that you've given us and that's a big component that really needs to look at, that the public is not aware of all those moving parts. So once again, Judge Chu, thank you very much for your leadership. Thank you.
Good morning, Suresh. Thank you for the invitation. And please give me the opportunity to update you on the current situation. There, our region, our city is passing through with a second coronavirus positive case being reported yesterday. This is a growing pandemic, numbers, I can mention worldwide, countrywide, statewide, the numbers are not stopped. The incidence and the transmission is there. In El Paso, we don't have community transmission yet. We have two travelers, which are the two cases that I am referring to. Mexico is our neighbor, increasing number of cases. Chihuahua State, our neighbor, they don't have cases up to now. New Mexico, growing number of cases as well as within our states. We have been very active in, in trying to provide and making available testing. We are moving very diligently in that direction and now we are reinforcing the epidemiology program, which is the one that receives all the calls coming in from providers and from the community to provide information and to providers to, in a correlation with the state, we approve the testing for specific cases that are coming in or suspects. We're opening an on-call system today with it, workers that will be receiving calls, doing triage and then passing the critical calls to the Epi program and providing information, general information and other preventive measures to the calls that are not critical in order to follow or to monitor. Up to now, with, in the city and region, we have 27 under monitoring, meaning that we call two times a day, mornings and evenings, to see if they have any symptom, they have developed any symptom like fever, gastrointestinal or any other symptom that correlates to this disease. This will ease a little bit the direct incoming calls to a one-line on-call system 24/7 that we used to have. And there was, you know, enough in order to cover. But with this situation, now we're going to have staff dedicated to, to, to this, to this system. We have been, you know, researching and reviewing international data, scientific, we have done consultations and now we are getting a better picture of who this coronavirus is. Now we know that this virus affects mostly young people. Fortunately, my old disease in, in groups from 19 to 50 years old. From 60 and over and with underlying conditions, these groups are at higher risk and are developing more severe forms of coronavirus disease. And this is precisely one of our priorities in order to protect elderly and individuals that have underlying health conditions. Chronic conditions, diabetes, lung processes, heart, kidney, all of these factors should be and need to be controlled and have a good medical and medication process in order for these individuals and, and be in a better position to defend against this virus for which we don't have any treatment and any vaccine. This reminds me when H1N1 came, 2009, and it had a cost on deaths and massive impact not only to individuals but to families, economy, business, et cetera, like we are seeing now. So not mentioning any more scientific data and criteria, I would like to present to you all the efforts that we are moving into lab testing because this will permit us to contain persons that are at risk and that they are posing a risk to our community because they at any moment can move from healthy individuals to sick and individuals that can transmit disease. Isolation is a critical concept that we need to move within our community in the 14 critical days to permit the infection to go away. Most, most of the cases that we will receive will be good with self-isolation. There's going to be a percentage of population that will need hospital services. And this is what we are trying to avoid. Scientific method demonstrates that the more we invest in prevention campaigns, in education and information to the community, we will last the impact in third level and second level medical infrastructure. We need to, to, to be very active in education, communication and information to the community. This is... This is, this is a must. Protective measures, I need to mention them wherever I go. Clean, cover, contain and call. Clean, this is watching strongly your hands every time you have the opportunity. This virus is going to go from sneezing and coughing right to a person in front of us up to three to six feet. That's the distance that we need to keep in order for the virus not to get to us. This virus needs a transportation mean, needs a vehicle because it is contained in mucus, phlegm, or any other secretion and flies. But if doesn't find nobody in the front, we'll be depositing in surfaces, door knobs, common surfaces, door knobs. Everywhere in where we put our hands, we can find viruses being deposited and right after that, if we take our hands to our face, eyes, nose and mouth will be the energy for this virus to, to develop in our, in our, in our system. Cover, secretions is very important. Now with allergy season, some influenza cases going on, well, there are people that are sneezing, so we need to contain secretions. Please cover soft tissues. Once you use them, please deposit them in, in, in a recipient and please don't sneeze or cough in your hands. Contain, call your doctor and your hospital if you need medical attention. Don't go directly. There's a lot of people out there, so we need to protect them, but also we need to protect ourselves. Containment, self-containment, maintain inform your provider and be vigilant when the symptoms start advancing. Call, of course, when any of these symptoms that I have mentioned appears and social distance, up to six feet, especially with those individuals that are sneezing, coughing, and that are presenting symptoms of infection, influenza-like illness. The interventions, you have mentioned many of those, very important and very critical, all of them. The city is doing the proper things with some social events being canceled and moving in that direction. Social distance is a key element to control this. Education, presentations all over the city, the region, public sites, malls, everywhere. We are signing staff in order to be informing that community and providing educational materials. Interviews, we covered all the media in the, in the past weeks and we will continue doing so. We all know the schools' decisions on moving the schedule when they are going to be back to, to classes and we'll continue surveilling the disease. We'll continue receiving the calls. We'll continue to answer any question or comment that comes through, through our lines, especially the ones from the doctor. Remember, we need to protect our healthcare providers. They will be critical when this situations and, and the disease advances. Let's take care of our healthcare providers, calling them before we go symptomatic to their places. Let's protect our healthcare providers. Let's protect our elderly community. Let's protect the ones that need our support to bring them, bring them medications, food, any type of, be vigilant of anybody that deserves and needs help from us, that we're still circulating within the community. And I will end my presentation right there.
Thank you so much and thank you department. You guys have been amazing the entire time and thank you for being here and great information and information that we should adhere to. And thank you for stressing on the prevention because I think we're looking at dealing with a virus instead of let's not deal with a virus and do as much as we can. Whatever happens is what we did not prevent. And so thank you very much and thank you for your partnership.
My pleasure.
Yes. Commissioner Pittis?
Mr. Rodriguez, can you come back up? We have a couple of questions.
You know, we only know the ages of, of the two individuals that have tested positive thus far. Are those two individuals related in any way since the circumstances?
What I can say, sir, is that both are travelers to California.
Okay.
And, and investigation, you know, is a process that takes time. We, once we have a case, we start our investigation in concentric circles. First the family and the close contacts and then we go to the job and then we go, you know, we expand our investigation. So we are still investigating. What I can tell you is that both traveled to California. Returning, one started presenting symptoms early in March and then later on the other person. But both are travelers to California.
From California?
Which are three states that, you know, now have some containment is California, Washington State and New York.
And we've done everything to protect their privacy and there's HIPAA regulations and so I'm very confident when we were told the process that they're following, you know, like you said, the family and following up on that and, but I do think, you know, we need to be very careful on the privacy and some of the things that can get out of hand if we don't do this properly. So Commissioner Robinson?
I, I, I was just wanting some clarification on, you know, I, I read and heard that, that the Health Department has 400 tests available for the, 800 now? Okay. Who exactly is, is being tested? It's not the public in general, it's just people that show certain or that meet certain criteria, correct?
That is correct, sir.
And, and what is a criteria again? Can, can you repeat that?
Yes, yes. We are considering, we're considering limited travel in the recent past to the seven countries that, that had massive transmission. Now, transmission has advanced to many states, many communities. So we are considering symptoms, we are considering exposure, if there was, and travel. And we have expanded our criteria, the criteria to the states that I, that I mentioned. Up to, yesterday, we still, we still were not limiting, but into the criteria that we have, California, Washington State and New York. Now, today, I think we will be expanding, sir, finding out that widespread is happening in many other places. And for the city, we have considered city employees to be at risk if they have traveled anyplace in the U.S. So, so we are heading that way and we will be providing and making the testing available to expand that groups of population that we consider within that concentric circles that we have or that we are designing.
And, and when it comes to the, to the testing, is there, are there any plans to set up these mobile testing sites like, like that are being done in other communities? I know that, I think Austin is setting up one now. I know that in Colorado they started doing it because, you know, you talked about if, if you feel like you have the symptoms, call your doctor before you go over there because you don't want to be, you know, possibly, you know, passing it along to other people. So I would expect that these mobile sites would be a good place to go if, if we ended up setting them up. Is, is that in the plans?
Absolutely, sir. Absolutely. This weekend, Saturday and Saturday and Sunday, we have been in contact with the Texas Department of State Health Services in order for them to provide us, to start a test, once the criteria has been passed and, and you know, the test has been approved. We need a number that is provided by the state after reviewing what we submit. A PUI number, Person Under Investigation Number. We are trying to get numbers to be under our control to fill and to start testing. Open sites for testing are considered and we would like to start as soon as we get that, those numbers from the state.
Thank you.
And Walgreens and Walmart and all of them are very cooperative and helping us by using their, their parking spaces and so we're really looking at that as a great option as this other cities have done. Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Good morning.
Good morning.
County Judge, Commissioners, thank you for having me this morning. First of all, I want to just give a quick update and briefing of what we have for the Office of Emergency Management. Just want to mention that Health is lead, as you all know. Our office is here to support the Health Department and, and their efforts. Also want to thank our, our leadership elected officials for the unwavering support you guys provide all the time in times of need and not, and there's definitely not an exception. Just a quick update for the Office of Emergency Management. My name's Ricardo Gonzalez. I am the Assistant Emergency Management Coordinator for the City and County of El Paso. The El Paso Emergency Operations Center was activated on Friday, March 13th and currently activated the Joint Information Center known as the JIC to, to help support and coordinate public information with our stakeholders and community at large. We have activated our emergency, emergency management plans to include our incident pandemic plans to coordinate staff and resources. Emergency Operations Center is supporting the Department of Public Health to support community-wide mitigation efforts, public information, education, epidemiological surveillance and monitoring. We're also coordinating for, to increase testing capabilities as we mentioned right now through the EOC and the JIC, which is Joint Information Center. We are streamlining communication process with elected officials, schools, hospitals, physicians, emergency managers, faith-based community and public safety and community at large. We're also working closely with Fort Bliss and there are no current cases in Fort Bliss. Fort Bliss is able to test active duty personnel and their families. They will notify us of any cases involve, involving the base. Future announcements of additional presumptive cases will follow the same protocol with the exception of, of a press conference. There will not be a press conference specifically for each presumptive positive case. We will notify the public through our website, social media platforms, media outlets. To address rumors, we request that our media and our Joint Information Center be addressed. Those are our message to Commissioners Court and our public. Do you have any questions for me?
Also, a great thanks to you and Jorge Rodriguez. What a, what a partnership and, you know, just relentless help that we get from OEM. So thank you Ricardo and thank Chief Rodriguez as well.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Judge.
Commissioner Robinson?
I'd like to go back to the previous question of the previous presenter in regards to the incidents that we have. We, we have two incidents of individuals that are positive, but as far as those individuals, where they contracted, you know, the, the virus themselves, but I think that we, and no disrespect to the individuals as far as their privacy, but by the same token, if I'm in an environment and those individuals have contracted this virus and he's in my midst, that impacts on me. It impacts on all of us. So therefore, I think that we owe the, the public, obligated to the public to inform the public as best we can. So in other words, my question goes, so we, Privacy Act, I understand all that, HIPAA, but by the same token, if he, this person contracted, but he's traveled to California, now he came, came to El Paso, where has he been or where have they been? In other words, they've been to the grocery store, they went to the movie theater? I was at the movie theater, I was at the grocery store, I was at Sam's, I was at Walmart, he or she was there as well? So what contact as far as locations could have been impacted by that? So that's a maybe unknown number of people that could have been affected, could be affected now by this individual.
Well, this is a perfect opportunity to, to express how it's passed and so that people don't fear that because you've been there, that in its sense creates that issue. So if you could address that, that we've been talking a lot about that.
Well, going back to, to the transmission of the disease, this disease, as I explained, is transmitted by droplets. There are diseases like measles and other bacterials, disease, bacterial disease, like tuberculosis, in which they are airborne. And there's a difference. Airborne disinfectious agents go to the air and stay there for quite some time. So if you are close by or pass by a measles case in this, you know, and you are not immunized, you have risk factors, it would be easier to acquire that infection because the viruses and the micro bacteria tuberculosis will be in the air. This disease is characterized because the virus needs to be contained, secretions and expelled through sneeze, sneezing, coughing, singing, yelling, being very active with your voice and with your lungs. So they will go out and they will at the most, at the most, six feet straight. Other studies are saying three feet, but we are moving to a six feet distance to make it more secure. As I, let me recall a little bit on the first case that traveled to California. That day he started with symptoms is the day that he seeked medical attention. No symptoms, no transmission. The worse the symptoms advance, more transmission, more cough, more transmission, more fever, high infectious, infectious load in your body. Okay, so that was the first one. The second one attended a meeting in California where a lot of people were there. Okay, so this distance for sure was not respected, the three feet and the six feet and something happened there. For us, it's highly important to do the investigations of cases, whatever the infectious disease is, if it's, you know, transmittable, and try to link the cases because that's the way that we create clusters. And having clusters, our interventions can be directed to that group of persons that are developing disease. So that's what I can present to you. Of course, advancing the investigation, we will find out more.
Well, I appreciate that, but let's be real. We try to do the best we can to eliminate any panic, do the best we can to educate people as far as the, the distance, you know, the signs and symptoms of individuals have. But in reality, what did happen? What happened during this past week, I witnessed myself at this particular weekend, I was at Sam's and other, other locations, it was wall of people with the panic. They were buying out the stores, you know, with toilet paper, cleaning material, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. The lines were, if you went to Sam's, the parking lot was full. You went to Walmart, all those places and how close were they? They were wall to wall. You know, so if this person or these persons had symptoms and signs of the virus, they're in the midst of all these people, could not some of those people be impacted?
Absolutely.
Because there was, there was no, people were not conscious of, I'm going to keep my six feet distance. You know, they were close as they could get to each other because they were in line, you know, to get those things that they felt that they needed like right now because of the imposed panic. now because of the imposed panic that they feared it was panic. So I'm just, I'm just wanting to make sure that we, the understanding is that, you know, that I would want to know if I was at Sam's and this person had the virus, that I need to get myself checked, maybe. Maybe. I'm not saying I should or will, but there's possibility because how do I know that I was not next to a person, that person didn't go to Sam's while I was there, and he coughed or sneezed, and you said it travels? Okay?
Yes.
So bottom line, are you saying he would have had to have sneezed and would have had to handshake or would have had to have had some contact directly with that person?
And be symptomatic.
Just to make sure that people are thinking that if you pass by, that in itself, and that would create a more alarm and more panic, there would have had to have been some contact. Just explain that because that's a very clear point because people are thinking, if I was there, then by the nature-
One thousand persons would be-
They're contagious.
Right, right.
It's very important that we-
One control measure that we are performing, as soon as we get a call from a person saying, "I'm feeling sick," you know, "just returned from California," stay home. Stay home. Isolate yourself. Stay home. From there, the recommendation is to seek medical services for them to receive the information. We provide information immediately on how to self-isolate and then the medical services in order to start the process for testing. It has been demonstrated the more the crowded settings enclosed, not open spaces or not big spaces, transmission will occur when persons are fully symptomatic. Fever, cough, sneezing in their hands, "How are you? How are you?" The mic, people coming here, that's the way. And the condition in general of health of the person that is receiving the, the, the germs. Remember, there's nobody in this world, nobody, that has immunity to this virus. Nobody. Transmission is limited to particles. It's an advantage.
Does that begs a question for me then, you know, how, how long can, can the virus survive on any given surface that, you know, if somebody coughed on their hand and, you know, and grabbed the doorknob or, or was touching a counter at a store or something like that, how long can the virus survive?
It will depend. Humidity, sun exposure, and wind, other contaminants around. It will depend. And it will depend on how often we clean the exposed surfaces in our work site and at home. We do be active cleaning. So those, those viruses are not immortal, you know, they, they, they are disintegrated. Sun, humidity, heat, heat is being investigated. So there's, I don't know, maybe the false expectation in some, in some parts that when summer comes, this will go. But it depends on environmental factors and how long those droplets can stay in surfaces. In other diseases, and please don't quote me on this, because all bacteria and all viruses are different, and this is a new virus. We met this virus two months and a half ago, so we are still. Other diseases can stay two hours in common surfaces. Some airborne diseases, the ones that float, can be in the air up to six hours.
We just, so we don't know yet, basically?
No, sir. No, no, sir.
And, you know, reiterate, you feel sick, that's, that's the, instead of figuring out where you were, or if you've got the, it's going to be based on, if you feel sick and you start taking care of yourself and you get sicker, then you, you go to your health provider. And that's the best prevention that we can have immediately. If you feel sick, stay away. Self-isolation, take care of yourself. If you get sicker, call your health professional. And so instead of figuring, if I got it from somewhere, which could create that panic, base it on feeling sick or not. If you feel sick, isolate yourself, go through the process, and then, you know, get attention, and then you'll get vetted to see if you'll take the test, and then that's how we're gonna, so the best thing is, you know, just deal with your, with your own physical situation, and that's going to be the best thing that we could do in our community. Thank you.
Thanks.
Judge, Commissioners, what we'd like to do is to proceed through each of the subcommittees that we've established and have them give you updates, have us give you updates-
Appreciate that.
On what we've accomplished and what we may be recommending. We're going to start with the internal service departments. I think we've had the most opportunity to be able to get in front of this. The other, the other groups got placeholders for them, so we're going to ask any of the, any of the department heads or any of the representatives that want to come up and give a current status, they'd be able to. And then at the end of the presentation, we've got just a summary of recommendation and considerations for the court to choose. So we get to the next slide.
Thank you, Chris.
We're going to start with Human Resources.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Melissa.
Melissa Carillo with Human Resources. So as we work through navigating the impacts that COVID has had on our, our work environment, we want to present you with a few recommendations in the best interest of ensuring the safest and most responsible work environment for our employees. So I have quite a bit of recommendations I'd like to discuss with you. First and foremost, board meetings. So until further notice, we are asking that the court consider canceling all board meetings facilitated by county departments or conduct such meetings in a virtual capacity, should they need to. So that's one of our strong recommendations. And because I have several, we can discuss them. If you have any additional questions, or we, we can wait until the end of the presentation.
We'll wait till the end.
Next slide, please. Regarding trainings that are hosted by county departments, we are asking the court to authorize the cancellation of all trainings facilitated by our departments, unless they can be conducted in a virtual capacity and unless they meet that threshold that they need to be conducted at this time. Also, we are asking until further notice that all county-sponsored trainings be canceled, and I believe Mr. Dion will speak to this a little bit later regarding cancellation fees and reimbursements and things of that nature. We also ask Commissioners Court to remove the requirement for county employees to conduct mandatory trainings during this period effective today going forward if that training is not available in a virtual capacity. Currently, you are requiring your employees to conduct mandatory ethics trainings, anti-harassment trainings, and things of that nature. Ethics is available in an online capacity. However, anti-harassment for supervisors is in person, so we're asking that the requirement be waived for this period of time. Next slide, please. So regarding sick leave, we have two parts to this, and the most important thing that we'll continue to stress, as the Health Department mentioned as well, if you are feeling sick, we ask all employees to please stay home. You have our utmost support with that, and we're going to go over a few things that will help you with that decision. Full-time, as a reminder, full-time county employees accrue at 10 days per year with a max of 90 days in their bank. This does exclude collective bargaining employees who accrue at different rates, at actual higher rates. But we're asking the court to consider a few things. First, remove the requirement for employee sick leave to be linked to any annual performance evaluation during this period effective today going forward. Right now, we have that requirement, and similar to the school districts, we're asking to waive those perfect attendance policies, if you will. We're asking that the court remove the requirement for employee sick leave to be verified by a licensed physician during this period, again, starting today going forward. That is one of the policy requirements you have. And then finally, authorizing sick leave balances to run into negative balances as necessary during this period beginning today. The idea is for those that may not have enough sick leave within their banks, we don't that, want that to be a reason why they choose to come to work feeling sick. We ask that the court authorize the system to go into negative with the intent of recouping on those accruals once they have been accrued in the future. We have spoken with the auditors on this matter, and we've also spoken with IT, and they have configured the Cronos system so that it will allow it to go into negative balance and track it appropriately for recruitment in the future. Next slide, please. So on the second leave portion regarding sick leave, we are asking the court to create a new Cronos leave code, which is entitled COVID-19. When an employee is being tested, or if an employee has a confirmed case of COVID-19, or should they be using it to care for a family member, we are asking that they code their time to this particular leave code if the court authorizes it. It will be authorized for up to 14 days of use. Additional leave may be granted depending on the circumstance, and this particular, particular leave would be subject to verification. So teleworking, this has been in the height of many conversations throughout the country and what we're doing. The county is absolutely in a position to authorize telework for some of its employees. We are asking the court to provide services. In order to keep the business open and provide services to our public in the most responsible manner, we ask the court to activate all coop plans per department and authorize telework as available during this period effective today moving forward until further notice. This would mean that those employees who engage in a telework capacity would be authorized or would need to sign a telework agreement form, and that agreement form is included. I don't know that we're presenting it to you at this time, but it has been reviewed by the county attorney's office. And if the court authorized telework, we would communicate with all departments so that any employee who engages in remote work would have to sign a telework agreement. This is extremely helpful in spelling out the duties, ensuring that they are still upholding the mission of their duties and responsibilities as a public servant while in a remote capacity, and this also helps with the accountability policy as we are accountable to our public. Additionally, we are asking the court to authorize an extension of administrative leave when employees must be sent home and telework is not available to them. Again, that would be effective today going forward. There are some employees that are unable to work in a telework capacity. Their very function of what they do cannot be done at home, and so if and when they need to be sent home, we want department heads and electeds to have that, that ability to authorize additional admin leave if necessary. And then we want to use this time to remind department heads and electeds, if you have not assessed your departments at this time, please ensure you know who is essential and who is non-essential. So as you're making those decisions on what we're going to do to continue serving the public in the best capacity, we know who's essential and who's not, and we know who can telework and who may not be able to. Next slide. So personal travel. This has probably been one of the biggest things that's been coming up in the past few days. My office has received several phone calls regarding personal travel. We are asking the court to require all employees to communicate with their supervisor any personal travel that they may engage in prior to commencing such travel. That is not a policy at this time, but for the safety and protection of others here within the county, we ask that they require this. We ask that the court authorize and require self-quarantine for 14 calendar days for all employees who have traveled to a Level 3 or 4 Travel Health Notice country. And the State Department puts out who is a Level 3, a Level 2, and a Level 4. At this time, we are asking the court to authorize that 14-day self-quarantine period for those to a Level 3 or 4 only. Now, if an employee has to be self-quarantined, the issue then becomes, what do they do while they're self-quarantined? If they are in a capacity to work and telework from home, then they should engage in those behaviors from home. If they are not in a capacity to work from home, they may use that COVID-19 leave. So based on all the discussion and guidance we've done so far, this is just a reminder. I think this chart will be very helpful for the court and for employees who refer back to it. If you are taking regular sick leave, out of the scope of any reason not related to COVID-19, you would continue using sick leave pay, which in your Cronos dropdown would include sick leave pay SLP. If you are taking vacation, many people already had plans. If they continue to travel, that leave is vacation pay. If they engage in regular work, whether it be here at the office or in a remote capacity via telework, they would code it as hours worked to RP1. If that administrative leave needs to be authorized for any reason, for those who cannot telework but should not be in the work site, this is where we ask department heads to authorize ADC or administrative leave. And then if the court authorizes the new creation of a COVID-19 pay code, then this is what you would code it to for those three situations there. Number one, if they are being tested for coronavirus. Number two, if they are sick with the virus or caring for a family member who is sick with the virus. And number three, if they are under a travel-forced self-quarantine. The last piece I want to chime in on is, any of us who are conducting work as it relates to the preparedness for COVID-19, we ask that you code your work as you normally would to hours worked, RP1, but there will be a new transfer code task that the auditors will create where you transfer those hours to COVID-19. That is helpful for tracking purposes for TEDM or the Texas Department of Emergency Management, TDEM. Okay. And the last slide that I have, just a reminder to all employees, department heads, and leaders within this, this organization, teledoc services are available to all county employees who are covered under our health insurance plans. As the Public Health Department continues to reiterate, in order to prevent flooding those offices with, with illnesses, consider using the teledoc services, consider calling your physician. Additionally, a reminder, we have EAP services. During this very confusing, stressful, and worrisome time, if employees are struggling with any of that, we remind them of the EAP services. Both teledoc and EAP are available 24 hours a day. The phone numbers and the websites are here for you to make those virtual contacts. And then closing, we're going to say this until we're blue in the face, but it's so critical.
Thank you.
Employees, if you feel sick, please stay home. I can't reiterate how important social distancing is. In our loving community, it may be hard. We want to give that hug, but avoid crowds, stay away from each other. You've heard those best practices of three to six feet. Good hand hygiene, washing those hands as much as possible, covering your coughs and sneezes, refrain from touching your face with those unwashed hands, and then as much as possible in your work areas, disinfect those surface areas, those knobs, those doors, light switches, and everything that you possibly can throughout the day to protect each other while here at work. Any questions from the court?
Melissa, great job. Your team has done an excellent job, captured our first meeting very well. And, you know, the teledoc, please, I mean, those are the things that really align with everything that we've said. Communicate, communicate as soon as possible, have that discussion that'll determine your next step. And so that's something that can avoid, and like I said, it's aligned with everything else of going to an office or getting back in the car. But if you could get that relationship going with the teledoc services and EAP as well, as you said, there's some stress out there, and, and that's not helpful if some, if you're not talking to someone. So thank you for everything you've done over the weekend. Thank you.
Judge, may I ask a question?
Pardon me? Oh, yes.
Judge, may I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Joanne Bernard, County Attorney. I want to ask an employer question, not a lawyer question. So many parents were notified that their children were going to be home for three weeks, and I think a lot of departments have been trying to figure out how to have people work from home for childcare. What we're running into is that our lowest-paid employees, the secretaries, the clerks, were having difficulty finding telework for them. So these are employees who are not sick, who are not, you know, subject to a test or experiencing any kind of sickness but are having childcare issues. Would this policy allow department heads and elected officials to use ADC if the employee does not have sufficient sick leave or vacation leave to go home? And is that at the discretion of the department? Is like one of the questions?
So that's a good question, and that's something Betsy and I talked about just yesterday because that's probably the most confusing one at this time, right? When the schools are closed, what are, what are our employees supposed to do? And so I would absolutely encourage in those situations that you try first to engage in a telework capacity so that if they need to be home, they are contributing and they're working. Secondly, if they cannot, one of the things that we discussed was if they cannot come to work and they cannot work, that vacation pay be utilized if they cannot find coverage for themselves. There are some employees who are fortunate to find coverage, whether it be a family member or someone else to care for their child, but there are other employees who are, they have no one else to care for their child. And so one of the things that department heads should consider is if vacation leave should be utilized. If that cannot be utilized, then you have that discretion to use administrative leave. Of course, this is all based on the honor system. This is based on the true judgment of our department heads and elected officials, but those are the options that we would use in ranking order.
Can I ask a second question?
Yes, ma'am.
For employees. So another question that's come up is that in offices like the county attorney's office or the county clerk's office, employees are in very close proximity to each other. Is there any notion about rotating employees using ADC just so that, as I said, you know, we can send our lawyers to work from home, but we can't really with the secretaries. So in lieu of using vacation and sick leave, is there any suggestion of having the authority to rotate employees so that we don't have so many people in the courthouse in our respective offices in a concentrated area?
So I guess my answers are probably going to sound the same, and I definitely would say the same thing. In my own office, if the court authorizes telework today, I plan on teleworking half the office so that each section remains covered, but as those are home, there's others at work, and those that are at work, when they switch off, will go home, the others- work, and those that are at work, when they switch off, will go home, the others will come in, but they are going to be in a continuous telework capacity. I realize that not every office has that opportunity. Again, looking to see whether or not administrative leave needs to be used is after you've exercised all judgment whether telework capacity can be done or not.
And any doubt, just call Melissa and her team because I think there's going to be very case-by-case situations, but I think the real emphasis is we'll do everything possible to align ourselves to what we've been talking about, social distance, and if you've got crowded spaces, well, then, you know, we have to react to that. The technology, Chris is working hard on finding what technology is available for us to be able to telecommute, and so the real emphasis is we'll figure out what needs to happen because it'd be not good for us not to be the best role models as to how we're doing things so we can also get the businesses to do the same. And so, you know, just get in touch with Melissa, and then we move on case by case. Delia?
Yes.
Sure, you can come up to the mic.
My plan was to use a skeleton crew. What we do is on holidays, I release the staff like half day, the day before, let's say the 24th of December, but we still have everything going on, but half as many employees because of that tight confinement. Just in the first hour and a half, Vital Statistics had 20 customers come in. So it's continually going, but I can still do it with half as many employees, and for that reason, I would like to implement that. That's where my mind went. We just have a lot of employees because a lot of the courts will not, or judges won't be here at the same time, so it's cause and effect. So a lot of those court clerks won't be busy because their particular judges are not here. So for that reason, I think it's still workable. We're still doing the job with half as many people because of the court systems also. Not all judges will be here at the same time, so we would need less clerks also. And we can do that with the Vital Statistics, too. We need to be here for that. The mental hearings for probate, we need to be there by law every 3 days that court needs to run at the hospital, but I still feel we can do it with a skeleton crew, and that's what I'd like to implement immediately. But of course, there, you bring up a good point, the childcare. So I'll ask those of, normally, they all have children, but some do not if they wish to stay, but I'd also like them to use their vacation also, and then at that time, let's reassess of who's not going to be here or who is able to leave. Yes? Thank you.
And remember, we continuation, closure is like the worst-case scenario, but if we can continue our operations, that's the most important thing we could do. If you feel satisfied with any creativity, that you can continue the work, that's what we're looking for. So look whatever creativity, run it by Melissa, and then make sure that we're doing the right thing and getting paid and not burdening our employees, especially from a pay perspective.
I have some, just a couple of clarification. On the ADC, is that remaining the same? There's not going to be an increase in the amount that's allocated to any of the electeds? Because right now, it's 5 days, correct?
Right, so there was a slide that talked about authorizing an extension.
Okay.
Yes, so if you want to go back, Miguel, just a few slides. Right there, the third bullet, Christina.
Okay.
Authorize an extension of administrative leave.
Okay.
So currently, your policy is 5 days.
Okay.
We're not putting a number here because we don't know what is going on. We wanted to leave it open-ended. Of course, we're relying heavily on our department heads and our elected officials to make extreme judgment. As the judge just mentioned, first and foremost, see what you can do to get creative and use a telework option. It's amazing how so many leaders will say there's nothing they can do when they're home, but it's really not the case. When you sit there and say, this is a really good time to write policy and procedure that we have not ever had the time to create, that's a really good time to put some people to work on telework. So let's get creative with our telework options. And then secondly, there's administrative leave, and then, of course, your vacation and your sick leave. But again, the judgment of our department heads and our elected officials will be key to see what we can do to maximize the efficiency of our employees.
And what we could do, because we will have a standing item on the court for updates, you would be extending it, basically, you would be authorizing it and extending it to the end of March, and then we would bring back an update to say whether we need continuing extensions or not.
Exactly. So living document. Thank you.
And just one more.
And Christina.
Yes, on slide number 6, just for clarification, it mentions until further notice, cancel all board meetings facilitated by county departments or conduct such meetings in a virtual capacity. Are we talking about the county boards, commission, Civil Service Commission, Historical Commission? Are we talking about something else?
We're talking about those, I believe there's 13 boards that are managed by the county.
Okay.
And so in HR, we have 4 boards. We have RISPO, Ethics, Civil Service Commission, and Sheriffs. It would be for those boards governed by a county department to do what they can to conduct those meetings in a virtual capacity if and should they need. So I will tell you, our Ethics Commission, our Civil Service Commission, and our Sheriffs, we're probably going to cancel, whereas our RISPO board is one of the important boards during this time where we need to be analyzing premiums and fees and co-pay waivers where it involves COVID testing and things of that nature. That one, we will conduct in a virtual capacity.
Okay, and just to remind the court, under statute on some of these, like Ethics Commission, for example, I believe Civil Service Commission, there are set statutory days that these organizations need to meet. However, it's my legal opinion that based on the circumstances that we would have here, that we can certainly not meet for this quarter or for this month if the statute requires it, and we just document that. Alance, of course, will take it by a case-by-case basis. If there's anything that's absolutely necessary or pressing, I can't think of anything, thought about it this weekend off the top of my head, but I just wanted you all to be made aware since you do have some appointments to those boards and commissions in case they reach out to you.
Thank you for that guidance. Thank you.
Christina, we are asking that those who run boards, they consult with county attorneys to see whether we can or not. So I know Sam in my office has been working with county attorneys to see how we can conduct RISPO board this week, this Wednesday, in a virtual capacity.
Thank you. Melissa, thank you very much. Thank you. Chris?
Do you want to, before you go on, do you want to act on the HR recommendations? We would like action from the court approving these recommendations.
What do you ask for?
Recommendations.
A motion?
We would take it slide by slide as you've broken it up. Is that, I'm assuming that's how you did it?
Unless they're able to lump them in one action.
I think we should do it slide by slide so it can be clear to the public and the county as well.
Okay, you want to go back on?
So this is the first slide where we're requiring an action, and there are 13 actions. So first action is regarding board meetings.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A question on that. We were talking about the, the board, Kamala made earlier about some cases you may need to have them on a case-by-case basis.
Yeah, that's what they were saying, that we would.
Right, where possible.
Pardon?
It'll be where possible. There will be some times where it's not possible.
Right, okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Was there a second to the motion?
Yes.
Motion by Commissioner Leon, second by Judge San Diego.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson.
Aye.
Judge San Diego.
Aye.
Motion carries.
The next action would be to cancel all trainings facilitated by county departments or conduct in a virtual capacity when and if possible.
And then we can also lump into there the other 2 on that slide.
Okay, and then we can lump in also to authorize a cancellation of county-sponsored trainings and also to remove the requirement of county employees to conduct mandatory trainings during this period if that is not available in a virtual capacity.
And to be clear, this is all travel and training, so whether it's a meeting unless it's considered to be absolutely emergency that the county attend.
Until when?
So it's effective March 16th until further notice.
Okay.
And then Judge.
Commissioner Perez.
You know, regarding, you know, the Commissioners Court has annual training requirements, I guess regarding that, is, I don't know if we need to look into that legally, because if we don't fulfill those requirements, then we actually get into legal trouble regarding our positions, but I think we need to.
That's correct.
I suspect every Commissioners Court in Texas is having the same problem.
I would expect so. Those trainings, is my understanding as well, is that they go on through the end of the year. I know that there's some that some members of the court may want to attend versus others, but we'll certainly be in communication with the Texas Association of Counties, Council of Judges, and Commissioners Court as well to advise them as such. But my understanding is I believe that they still continue on through the end of the year, so there might be some additional opportunities. And quite frankly, we'll also work through that as well to, if necessary, provide training to you all here, and there are certain statutory requirements that need to be met. I researched that as well, so there is a Plan B if necessary. Yes, sir.
I suspect other elected officials are also in the same boat.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
And the Metro 6 is working real hard on what do they need to do to either extend or, you know, address that issue as well.
There a motion on this particular item?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson.
Aye.
Judge San Diego.
Aye.
Motion carries. Christina, may we lump these 3 into 1 on this slide?
For the next slide, yes.
So regarding this slide, there are 3 action items lumped into 1. Removing the requirement of employee sick leave to be linked to annual evaluations effective March 16th moving forward for this fiscal year. Removing the requirement for sick leave to be verified by a licensed physician during this period. And authorizing sick leave balances to run into negative balances as necessary with the intent of recouping. Again, all effective March 16th, moving forward until further notice.
So moved.
Second.
And I suspect we'll get updates on that balance if it, or if it, okay.
Yes, sir, we will watch that. Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson.
Aye.
Judge San Diego.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Melissa, before you go on, can we add one more item on the sick leave? Employees are not authorized to use sick leave during their first 90 days of employment. Could we waive that 90-day waiting period?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson.
Aye.
Judge San Diego.
Aye.
Motion carries. On this next slide, the only action we're asking for is the authorization to create a new Kronos leave code, COVID-19. Again, it would only be used for those who are testing, for those who have confirmed cases, for caring for those who have confirmed cases, and for those who are in a self-quarantine travel restriction, which is on the next slide. Authorization of this creation of code effective March 16th moving forward.
Remove.
Second.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson.
Aye.
Judge San Diego.
Aye.
Motion carries. On this next slide, we can have 1 action, authorizing the activation of COOP plans per department and authorizing telework as available during this period. Also approving and authorizing the agreement form, which I know you do not have and have not seen, but it's been presented and reviewed by the county attorney's office, and require those agreements to be signed by any employee engaging in remote work. And authorizing an extension of administrative leave when employees must be sent home and are unable to telework during this period. All 3 actions for approval would be effective March 16th moving forward.
Remove.
Second.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson.
Aye.
Judge San Diego.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, these would be the last 2 actions. Time to bring that one up. So we have another item that we'll include with this, but the action would be not only to require county employees to disclose personal travel to a supervisor prior to commencing, it would also require a self-quarantine for 14 calendar days for any employee who has traveled to a Level 3 or 4 Travel Health Notice country. And the next item that was just brought to my attention, it would also include for vacation purposes, any new employee who has not been able to use vacation because it's within 6 months. If we could waive that 6-month waiting requirement, in the event, employees need to take vacation sooner for extreme circumstances.
So moved.
Second.
A question. We should know of an individual that traveled, pulled that category, right? Because we authorized his travel.
Correct. So will we authorize the travel for a business perspective, but for those choosing to travel on a personal side? Now that we have authorized the requirement for them to disclose, we will now know.
Right, okay.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson.
Aye.
Judge San Diego.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Judge.
Commissioner Perez?
Betsy, has there been any other considerations for things like hiring freezes or any things like that that may be necessary given kind of budgetary uncertainties?
We have not discussed implementing those. We are watching closely where we're at, but we have not discussed implementing hiring freezes at this point yet.
We expect that the measures that we took today will have some fiscal impact, right? Or is it just?
We definitely are expecting, and that was part of the budget direction we did give departments, that it's a time of uncertainty and that we are going to have to proceed with caution.
Is that something that we should, maybe at the special meeting, as we have this as a standing item, if you can just, you know?
We are doing an analysis on how much a hiring freeze would save. I asked for that recently, how much would a hiring freeze save if you looked at and evaluated our vacancies from the past year based on our previous policy of what positions were absolutely essential? So we have a policy that we've used previously about which positions are subject to a hiring freeze and which ones are not. So we're evaluating, based on the vacancies that we had the last 12 months, how much would we have saved by a hiring freeze?
And not just that, but any other fiscal measures that could be taken in the short term to help mitigate some of the uncertainties that we're facing at this time.
Yes, sir.
If you could keep taps on the essential as well, because, you know, we're having to deal with a lot of challenges with our existing employees, and what we don't want to do is bring more employees in and have to deal with these same issues. So if you could keep an eye on which are essential to move on and which we could wait until we understand our situation.
My office did look at which new hires were coming to new employee orientation, so we had a new employee orientation scheduled for next Monday, the 23rd, and I want to say we have 23 new hires coming in that had already been offered, put their 2 weeks in and were ready to come to work for the county. But going forward, I definitely think it would be good judgment on behalf of department heads and electeds.
Thank you, Melissa.
Yes, sir.
It's going to be real important. Thank you.
Melissa, just following up on what the judge just said, that every department has in fact identified essential and nonessential employees? Not the new hires, I'm talking about the current employees.
We believe so. When I got to that point, I wanted to remind department heads, if they had not yet done that study, it's important that they look to see what is essential and what is not essential, meaning that if we went to a closure at some point in the future, our departments, our departments without hesitation would know who needs to report and continue operations versus those that would not.
And the definitions move. So, for example, there are people, I'm going to use Caesar and Jessica. There are days that I could allow them to either be on leave or telework. But there are periodic times, I can't go, for example, I couldn't let them do that for 30 days. I could let them do it for short times. And that's one of the things that in identifying who's essential and nonessential, you have to identify like how long, if we were to be inoperable, how long would that position be able to be part of an inoperable situation? And how often they'd have to come in? And that's something Nicole has been working on as well.
Thank you, Betsy.
Go on.
Thank you, Melissa. Great job.
Let's go on to our next department update.
Good morning, Judge.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Robin Sully, Director of Facility Maintenance. Due to the coronavirus, we have made the following changes. Automatically, we started changing the cleaning protocol. What we've been doing is we've been having our custodians to clean all the open areas, such as handles, doorknobs, trilogy locks, things of that nature. We call it a deep cleaning. So that's what we've been doing. In fact, after this mission's court's over, we will come down and start wiping down in here as well. So that's one of the protocols. Also, our night facility custodians are also doing the same thing. They remove door handles down, windows, ledges, rail, handrails, elevator buttons, things of that nature to minimize it. Shorter supplies. What we've been doing is for about the past three weeks, we've ordered a lot of supplies. A lot of it is on back order. Everybody's trying to get them. Some of the companies we even look to order supplies from is Gain, Gainer's Supply Company as well. But we are okay right now, but we're looking to get some more supplies to come in. If you haven't noticed, we've been putting sanitizer dispensers throughout the county facility. We have some here at the main entrance. For example, we have two here on the third floor skywalk. We have some scattered on some of the floors. We also have one or two of them down at the MBR, basically where the heavy population are coming in. We put the hand sanitizers there as well. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Sully.
All right, next department that we'd like to bring forward is County Attorney's Office.
Thank you, Chris. Joanne Vernal, County Attorney. We have been working closely with the County Judge's office, as well as Ms. Keller's office, and coordinating closely with the City Attorney's Office to ensure that our legal analysis is in lockstep with the City Attorney, as well as continuing to provide recommendations and answer questions as needed by both the County Judge and the department heads.
We have to call in the purchasing agent. Our next slide, let's see if we're where we're at.
Hi, Deborah. Good morning, Judge. Good morning, County Commissioner.
Morning.
Today, I'm going to just take you through exactly what we do under normal conditions versus what we've been doing and what we plan to do under these conditions. And all the recommendations are going to be on my final slide. By law, you know I'm responsible for all procurements, that's anything goods or services. No purchases can be made without a prior identification of funding, and the auditor cannot pay unless we do everything correctly. In normal conditions, I control all purchases under $50,000 by your approved policy. But by law, you are required to see all purchases greater than $50,000, whether those are exemptions or not. Larger dollar purchases require advertising, formal processing, a formal bid opening, plus final court approval. And this is a fairly lengthy process, as you know. Next slide, please. Texas statute allows for certain discretionary exemptions to address calamity and protect against any type of damage to the public or to protect public safety. These are exemptions. They're called the emergency exemptions, colloquially. The purchasing agent, me, I can move in, I can move fairly quickly on anything $50,000 or less because you, the court, have already set that up in policy, in accordance with the law. The court must still approve all emergency exemptions greater than $50,000. And that's where we're being slowed down should one of those purchases have to occur. Additionally, depending on the level and authorization, routine procurements and policies can be temporarily suspended during a declared and verified emergency or a situation in which the court deems it necessary. However, some federal and state reimbursements do require verification of process or at least verification that the process was suspended. And this is usually done by resolution. Next slide, please. Now, during this declaration, purchases related to the preservation of public health and safety are being processed as a critical priority. My department is on anything that's coming through. We're working very closely with the executive team. And once any type of emergency purchase, and especially for preventative, or helping get things shut down or helping keep things clean, is coming through, we're moving on it. Luckily, most of these have already been under $50,000, and so we've been able to take care of them. We are running into some issues on availability. But to protect the reimbursement options that may be available at all dollar thresholds, whenever we move, we're moving with policy-approved processing, but we're trying to do it as quickly as possible and in consideration of any needs or urgency. Purchases at or over the required court approval threshold must still, without any type of allowance in place, be handled under the emergency exemption request. Which means if we have to move on something that's over $50,000, I will be unable to move on it immediately until I can get the court together for that type of approval. So the purchasing department is currently working with the County Attorney's Office to figure out how to do the nice things that fit in with the rest of the plan. For instance, we're looking at alternative, maybe live streaming the bid openings. But we'll find out more about that and we'll bring those to you when we get more details on how that can be worked. But other than that, we're standing by for additional guidance or exemptions from the Commissioner's Court. Next slide, please. The recommendations today from the purchasing perspective are to approve and authorize me, the purchasing agent, by position in consultation and agreement with the county administrator to make purchases above the court-approved threshold of $50,000 for any contracts necessary to make the purchase promptly to relieve the necessity of the citizen or any contracts necessary to preserve and protect public health or safety of the residents under Texas Local Government Code 262-024, A1 and A2. The other recommendation is to allow this authorization in limited instances where the purchase is necessary for the reasons set forth above and here. Waiting for Commissioner's Court approval or waiting for Commissioner's Court approval or meeting would cause a detrimental delay to what we're trying to do. Further, require all such contracts to be brought before the Commissioner's Court at the earliest available meeting. And this is also where we would, in effect, get retroactive approval for those purchases. But none of these purchases would be made in a vacuum. They would be made in conjunction with the executive team and county administration approval in place of the court. And it's only on items that meet the emergency definition as declared by the feds, the states, and the Commissioner's Court. And unless there are questions, that is the presentation from me.
Thank you, Deborah. Christina?
Yes, so we ask that the court make a motion to approve those items that was just indicated by Ms. Carrejon as reflected on slide number two. If the court is in agreement.
You need to read that, or?
She already reiterated that?
Oh, okay.
Yes, sir.
Want to approve?
Second.
Is it prudent on something like this to put in a deadline or a timeframe? I mean, let's say if we extend this for like, let's say, three months, you know, for it to come back to Commissioners? I mean, just, you know, just to have an abundance of caution that, you know, that there's these checks and balances for these types of things.
Yes, you can do that if you'd like to.
And that's something I would suggest, just that, you know, for-
What length of time are you suggesting?
I think checking back within the next three months.
Three months?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm in the motion to reflect that this be effective from here to three months.
That's, thank you.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon is absent. Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Sanmaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Oh, thank you. Our next department, I believe, is the County Auditor. Edward?
Good morning. Edward Dion, County Auditor. With regards to Cronos, as mentioned earlier by Melissa, we did set up the COVID-19 task. It looks like we need an additional pay code, but it may take a little bit of time. So my suggestion in the interim, if anybody has to be out because of COVID-19, that they just go ahead and code sick and then put the task as COVID-19 at the moment. Because my understanding is it might take a little bit of time. But we'll work with HR on that and make sure we communicate the right information. But definitely, anybody spending time on COVID-19, they should go ahead and key the task in regarding the planning and response activities, so we can capture all of that information. You should also consider, if there's any planned absences, vacation, be sure to pre-approve in Cronos, so that if you don't have access to the system, that you don't have your Cronos not approved. Regarding payroll, we've tested for a period of time in the past, vacation, I mean, not vacation, but holidays. And we can do most of what we do for payroll remotely. But we still need to come in the office for between one and four hours because we've got to print payroll checks, vendor checks, and we need to mail them out. So we'll still have to come in the office. But it's all dependent on everybody coming together and cooperating. We rely on HR, the Sheriff's Department, and all the departments to get in and approve their employee payroll, the managers approving their stuff. Because if that doesn't happen, payroll doesn't happen either. Any general questions for payroll? You can always email co-payroll@epcounty.com. Regarding accounts payable, we've estimated 70% of our staff can most likely operate remotely. The only challenge there is that they'll have to physically take their equipment with them because most of them don't have laptops. And my understanding that that's an acceptable option at this point. So the receiving, if anybody has any receiving of goods and services right now, it's my recommendation that you enter the stuff in the system while you have direct access. Assuming you don't have any online access, you can manually sign the receiving document. Received, print your, put your, print your name, sign it, date it, and then email it to auditorsap invoices@epcounty.com. You should identify any mission-critical vendors that are key to your department operations to ensure the auditors expedite those payments in a timely fashion. Next slide. Munis Remote Access. We don't anticipate any real problems. We think the system is up and functional basically 24 hours a day. Auditors, purchasing, HR, budget, all the departments usually can get access just about any time unless we're doing updates. The remote access to Munis, I'll just point out, if you're going to work remotely, you need to ensure that you can successfully log on and validate your functionality. If you haven't done so already, you're probably going to have to communicate with HR to make sure that you have a VPN or an RDS set up on your computer. So you can remotely connect to the network through epcounty.com. You should contact IT to set it up and test your login and functionality remotely for a period of time, because you don't want to be offsite and not being able to connect. One thing I'll say, if your password is about to expire, you need to change your password while you're directly connected to the network because doing it remotely sometimes causes issues. The auditor financial system, if you have any questions relating to the financial system as far as code setup, you should email auditsupport, which is sup@epcounty.com, and somebody from the division will get back to you right away. We also deal with Odyssey, the judicial software system, for financial questions. And any questions there can be addressed to r.gobaldon@epcounty.com. Next slide, please. The COVID-19 expenditures. Due to the fact that this has been declared a national emergency, there are funds that we could possibly get reimbursed for. So if you've expended funds prior to today that relate to responding to the coronavirus, you need to communicate that to the auditor's office. And anything in the future, you need to make sure that you code that information. We've provided a setup string that's going to be going to the general administrative account. It's going to be titled COVID-19 Operating Expense General. The Budget Department will be following up with instructions with regards to the type of expenses that would be allowed, the budget that's set up, and the procedures in order to use that account. Next slide. The additional items we need to consider, and it was talked about earlier, we do expect financial impacts, and there are some revenues that are going to be impacted. So if you experience any impacts on your revenue streams, whether you have event cancellations for parks, facility rentals, foregone revenues due to closures, and other revenues that are volume-based or fluctuations that are nonroutine, please communicate to the auditor's office. As previously said, regarding travel, basically all travel that's not essential right now is canceled. And we'll let you know, we get information is when it will be continued again. So until further notice, everything's canceled. The auditor will coordinate with county administration with regards to any emergency travel that may need to be approved. Outstanding travel and advances, we're going to give you some kind of instructions as to what you need to do as far as cancellations and refunds. And if you get credit, how we'll use those credits in the future. And we'll create a log so that we can make sure that it's utilized down the road. Employees will not be penalized if you do have some kind of a penalty for cancellation that is not waived because this is an unforeseen event and it shouldn't be your cost. Basically, all I had at this point.
Thank you, Ed. Chris?
We're on to the Budget Department.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Wally Hargrove from the Office of Budget and Fiscal Policy. Up till now and moving forward, all operations will be available on a normal basis through electronic interaction. We have the ability to work offsite and telework. All budgetary amendments and internal transfers, as well as the current 2021 budget timelines, remain the same until further notice. However, what I will remind the departments, when we did our budget kickoff meeting two weeks ago, with the current situation in the economy and where the market was going, we asked departments to plan accordingly, a contingent plan in the event we had a swift financial downturn or anything we needed to react to. We're there now, and I've asked each department to have those backup budgetary plans available as we go into our 2021 planning. Our office, as noted by Commissioner Perez, will look at what cost-saving avenues we've taken in the past. And HR has already reached out to my team for the salary savings on a hiring freeze. So we'll start working up those numbers and be reporting those to the court in the very near future. Our Financial Recovery Division does interact with the public quite frequently. However, with the courts being wound down for this next few weeks, that face-to-face interaction drops off significantly. But we're also planning a three-phase workload based off of what action proceeds here forward on how we're going to interact with our clients and continue collections. This is one of those areas that Mr. Dion mentioned. As revenue streams that are impacted potentially, as we look at those interruptions, we're looking at what that forecast may be on our current economic condition as well. Of course, our grant team will look for grant resources and aggressively seek those state and federal programs out. With that Presidential Declaration of National Emergency, significant funding will be available. And I'll reiterate to everyone that documentation absolutely is required and is crucial during this timeframe, both on time and materials. We have received the DSO, the Disaster Summary Outline, from the state TDM. And so it basically lines out what costs are, can be recouped, and the documentation that's required to recoup those costs at the local jurisdiction level. I will, during the last item on the agenda prior to going to executive session, is our weekly budget amendment. I will be asking the court to consider allowing a revision of the budget amendment to establish a COVID-19 budget from our contingency funds so that as any of our departments that have immediate needs for appropriations outside of normal operations, that we've got the funding available in that COVID-19 account that Mr. Dion went over a couple of slides ago. I've also asked the grant team to reach out to each of our funding entities. As you're aware, with the community centers being shut down, meals being served at those community centers, we have service requirements by some of our grantees. We're reaching out to each of the grantees to see if there's going to be a waiver on any of those service provision requirements. And then we are likely to see an increased demand for general assistance as well. If anyone, as individuals are impacted economically and they don't have an incoming paycheck, we may very likely see a spike in the request for general assistance as well. So we're working closely with Irene and her team to estimate what we may need to budget additionally for consideration as we see the next 30, 60, and 90 days play out. And that is my overview for budget.
Thank you.
All right, next slide, please. So I have a couple of updates from a technology standpoint that I'd like to provide the court. First of all, we've heard a lot about remote work. ITD has done a lot of work in piloting our own remote work efforts over the last probably three months. And we've learned a lot of lessons, and we've learned some tools that work really well and some tools that don't. So we're hoping that we-
So we're hoping that we can bring some experience not only to this, along with the technology. You've probably heard RDS mentioned quite a bit. That's a remote desktop services. That's a tool that allows an employee to click on a, click on a link on a webpage and eventually bring up basically a browser screen that looks just like a computer that they would see at their desktop. So we replicate what looks like is on their screen. This has been a capability we've had for quite some time. We have a very large capability to, a large capacity to be able to handle. Right now, we're between 1,400 and 2,000 sessions that we believe we're able to host. We haven't tested, a stress test on this, yes. So we're actually working on NIT to try and get at least some sense of how many we can, we can handle other than just what's on paper. We're also looking at allocating additional resources to be able to expand this if we need to. We're encouraging the use of Outlook Webmail. That's the site that a lot of people utilize to get their, to get their email, which is a primary form of communication. It's a really easy, simple thing to do. You just need a browser, and we're encouraging departments to utilize that. As a part of our Active Directory upgrade that's been going on for about two or three years, it's a major infrastructure change for ITD. We're going to incorporate what's called Microsoft Office 365, which includes Teams. And Teams is a new communication tool that replaces what many users may use, may know as Communicator now. It includes chatting, it includes voice, it includes video conferencing. We believe that this tool is the, is the solution to interdepartmental communication, either in a telework standpoint and even when we're back to normal, to normal usage. We'd hope to delay this until the full implementation of our, of our infrastructure was done, but we've seen the need for it now. So we're escalating just this portion of Teams, and we're hopeful to roll it out very soon so that our departments can begin using all the features of voice, video, and direct, direct messaging between each other, as well as document sharing and a couple other features. The next item is Voice Over Internet Protocol. We're already utilizing VoIP. VoIP allows us to be able to redirect phone calls to different areas in a very quick and responsive way. We don't have a lot of licenses to do that. It's part of, part of an initiative that is, a larger initiative that's coming, that's forthcoming, but we believe we can utilize these tools to be able to, if we need to redirect calls from the outside world into either a Teams environment or soft phones so that employees would be able to respond to the public kind of no matter where they are. So we're working on that right now. That's not a final product, but we're very confident in our ability to carry that.
So Chris, before you move on, this is essentially, because I've been asked this before, call forwarding, as a call comes in, somebody can actually be at home and answer that phone, is that correct?
It is. We're not recommending that at this time. Part of the problem with call forwarding is we can consume a lot of our inter, our county-owned lines, and we can kind of flood those if we're, if we're doing lots of forwarding around. It also exposes the employee's home number to the public to some extent, and we're fearful of leaving that as advice. And so that's one of the reasons why we'd like to get this established so employees, or so that the public could use a public phone number and then not expose our employees to their private cell number or their private home number. Like, we think that, that's probably a better way to go. So yes, internally, it may not be as big an issue, and in an emergency, I don't think it's a problem. But if this is something that we're going to consider for the public, we would really want to come up with a solution that protects our employees from that kind of exposure.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. The next is Webex. Our partners who own Webex have offered during this time to expand some of the licensing that we have. This would enable some of the board meetings that you've heard about. We've used it in IT. This morning, we did some tests to try and find out how we can, can meet with each other. We've got a couple other streaming options that are available, and that's if we want to have video sharing. If you've used Webex before, you can share your desktop and documents. But, but, but in the end, it may come down to just simple as voice calls. Those can be very effective as well. Additionally, as we're doing right now, we have YouTube Live streaming, so we're always able to contact all of our employees through YouTube Live streaming. This is a very effective way to reach a large number of staff members. It does expose everything to the public, so it wouldn't be very private, which is why we prefer probably Webex or some of the Microsoft tools that we have. And then lastly, I wanted to tell you that I think one of the biggest challenges we're going to have is training on all this. So I heard Mr. Dion and a couple of the departments talk about getting their employees up and running. We're currently, we've stopped all other training, we've stopped all our other, all our other initiatives, and focused our training team on creating little videos that can show employees how they can use RDS, how they can use Teams, how they can use Outlook Webmail, kind of all these tools that we're presenting. We're hopeful to get these published within the week, at least in some format. We have to refine them over time. And additionally, we're redeploying some of our resources. So with, with the declaration last week, we kind of began focusing more on ensuring that these tools that we're going to provide to the employees are available. We've identified those essential functions that we provide, and we're trying to take away employees from other duties that they may be doing and helping them focus on keeping our systems up and running and serviceable, maybe answering the phones and helping with tech support. Lastly, I'd like to talk about our public services. Those are mostly internal services that we provide to the public. We've got a couple that we stood up very quickly. One is the covid19 epcounty.com website that was created. We thought it would be a really easy way for people to be able to access information. We can direct that site to wherever we need it to go to. We can put whatever information we want there. It's a lot easier than putting a lot of forward slashes in there and trying to figure out. I know that can be a challenge when you're trying to get something quickly. So I encourage us to utilize that, that direct URL. And then lastly, we're attempting to purchase a vanity phone number. That's a number that would be like an 800 number or a toll-free number that would have the word El Paso in it or county in it. We've got a couple ideas. I don't want to say it here because somebody might buy it out from underneath. That's what we're working on it right now. To be able to very quickly be able to get information to people. And that could be useful, very useful right now, but in the future, we might even use it just to make access to the county easier with a number that's, that's a little bit catchy. Next slide. So with that, like I said, your internal service department's had a lot of time to kind of put these things together. When I say a lot of time, I meant two or three days. The rest of the, the rest of the teams really were out doing things at the time this was. So we weren't able to prepare big presentations, but I did want to leave placeholders if anybody on this list wanted to come up and address the court, or if the court had questions related to any of these, these areas. Do you have a courts, we have courts? We're going to start with, with Public Health and Safety. Anybody from Public Health and Safety? Oh, I'm sorry.
Let him go.
Sorry, Mike. You were up next. All right, so we'll move on to the next slide. Public Services, these include the County Clerk, District Clerk, Tax Assessor, Community Service, Economic Development, and Parks. Any updates that we want to provide?
There may not, Chris, there may not be any, any updates, but I mean, going back to, to the Sheriff's Department, I mean, I, I'm very curious as to what the, what the plan is for the jails, and because those are, that's an area within the county that we do have people within close quarters, and you have new people coming in and people leaving. And so I think it would be great to have at least some, at some point, some type of update from Sheriff's Department regarding what's going on there. And also, I see, I see Constable Ugarte is here, but looking at what, what, what the JPs and what the constables are doing when it comes to evictions. And are we, are we planning on having a moratorium on evictions during this time? And that also begs a question for me, what the county can do. I don't know if we can do anything to, to work with the utilities. I know some of the utilities have said that they won't be shutting off services, but I don't know if there's something more that we need to do or that we can do in that, in that respect, just to make sure that, you know, we're not causing problems, putting, putting more strains on some of our social programs and, you know, homeless shelters, for example, or even the jail when, as, as things move forward.
Because we will ask them for more in-depth update. Right now, while I'm in here, UMC is working with my office on what all they have implemented. Chief Witten shared, did share some information with me last week on different levels of sanitation and things that they had implemented. But we will ask them to, to be prepared to attend on Thursday and provide an update on everything that's going on. And then as soon as I get the update from Ramon as to what the discussion was this morning with UMC on the protocols they're exercising in the jail, I'll be sure to share that with the court as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Constable.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. Constable Ugarte, Precing One. As far as the Constable's office, we are going to be available. We're going to be on duty just in case the Sheriff's Office does see an increase in calls because of this pandemic. We are going to be available to assist in answering patrol calls. As far as the JP, I know Araceli from JP Three is here, and she does have some recommendations that the JP Court put together.
Good morning. My name is Araceli Morinada. I'm here on behalf of Judge Josh Shidera, Precing Three. As of now, they are discussing to putting in place a standing order to cancel all non-essential hearings pursuant to all directives by the Office of Court Administration. It is our understanding that only the hearing, putting us on timeless are the evictions as mentioned. The standing order, we could only create only regards to the evictions, that the order could state would not be addressing any eviction cases or related issues until the governor states that this disaster has been lifted. So as of now, that we will not, which will include any writ of reentries, writ of retrievals, writ of restorations, and writ of possessions.
And so that's, I know your, your office is working on that, but those are recommendations that the Council of JPs is going to be adhering to, or?
Well, I believe that this was Friday. Judge Shidera did try to contact all the other JPs to go ahead and have the standing order in place. I do apologize he couldn't be here today. I know he, he wasn't feeling well.
Okay. Can we possibly get an update on that on Thursday? Just to understand if that, if that was actually undertaken by all the JP Courts? Thank you.
At the meeting with the diocese, that was the number one with an exclamation point that we try to avoid any evictions during this situation, and I was going to address it with you. So thank you for doing that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So Judge Shidera, thank you as well.
Thank you.
Okay, next slide. So, go back, one slide, please.
The Community Services is on the slide. I've provided the court some updates about what's going on with Community Services, but that's a very critical area. Irene, if you could share with the court the work that you all are doing. It's, it's one of our most vulnerable populations, and our team has worked really hard to be responsive.
Hi, good morning, County Judge Commissioners. Irene Valenzuela, Community Services Department. We've been coordinating with El Pasoans Fighting Hunger, the United Way of El Paso County, as well as the City of El Paso and other nonprofit partners throughout the county to have food commodity boxes ready for our most vulnerable population. In this case, it's our seniors that are affected by county and city senior center closures. We have 20 senior centers throughout the county that serve daily meals, noon time, to seniors across the county. We've contacted all our registered enrollees in those specific centers. We've notified them that the centers have been closed and that we will be distributing food commodity boxes. It's one week's worth of food, shelf-stable food in a box. They will be driving up. We've set up with the assistance of United Way, the city, El Pasoans Fighting Hunger. We're setting up drive-up, pop-up food pantry styles at every single nutrition site throughout the county where they're going to be driving up, and we're going to be loading a week's worth of box to all those seniors that have indicated to us that they need food staples for the rest of the week. We'll be doing this for the next two to three weeks as supplies keep up and volunteers keep up at El Pasoans Fighting Hunger to create those boxes. So effective tomorrow, we will be closing eight county centers. The city closed their 12 centers on Friday. We took today to notify all our county senior center participants that we're going to be closed effective tomorrow. We'll be distributing to them effective Wednesday, these food boxes. Our food vendor that prepares daily meals at noon time to all these seniors is preparing to receive a large shipment of shelf, pre-prepared shelf-stable food packages so that we can begin delivering those at some of these drive-up sites to the seniors as well. Also, they are mass-preparing food staples, flash freezing, so that we can include those as part of the delivery options to our seniors. So these are, I want to emphasize that we're mobilizing for all those senior participants that are enrolled in our programs right now. This is not a mass distribution just yet, but this is a distribution to our senior participants, our older adults that have been enrolled in our programs throughout. And this will address the seniors that routinely attend all 20 county and city of El Paso senior sites. El Pasoans Fighting Hunger is also mobilizing mass assembly of food boxes to create a mass distribution throughout the county. They're working with other partners as well to identify large locations that can serve as assembly locations for mass distribution to the public at large. And so we'll have more information on that later this week by El Pasoans Fighting Hunger. I did reach out to Brian Kennedy of the Sports Commission. He has made this Coliseum available for one of these mass distribution sites, and so he's been a great partner in this effort as well. And so that, more information on that mass distribution site will come later this week from myself and El Pasoans Fighting Hunger. But for now, we are addressing the food scarcity issue for those seniors that are currently enrolled in our programs. We did notify all of them. We called them over the phone this weekend. We had a phone bank. This weekend, we called all. We've identified those that can come and can pick up, and they will, we will be addressing those needs for them today and tomorrow and Wednesday as well. We're going to be doing these distributions weekly until we can get a more robust and possibly a home-delivered-for-all program. That is something that I'm in discussions with budget about what that's going to cost for the county, and we'll be presenting that to you as well, should that come. We are also prepping for any spikes, like Mr. Hargrove told you, any spikes and additional requests for public assistance through our general assistance program. In the event someone is out of work or inability to work, they can't access a paycheck. If need be, we're going to have to be addressing those public assistance needs for some folks where we pay rent and utilities for them. And so we'll be monitoring any spikes on that to see if we're going to need additional funding to be able to address those needs as well. One of the partners we're working with is Adult Protective Services as well. They have some funding that they've told us they can make available for any seniors or any older adult that needs any type of assistance during this period as well. So we're mobilizing, we're an effort with them. They're going to try to set up an office in our building, Family Youth Services Center, so that we can address the public as they're coming in or any seniors that come in to be able to access services through Adult Protective Services as well.
And on the general assistance, we also, as you know, we have a Veterans Assistance Program. We only have a limited amount of funding left because we're coming to the end of our grant year. And so we've been, I've been discussing with a new Veterans Services Manager that when that funding is depleted, the next option is to refer those clients to general assistance. So, and, and we're also reaching out to Texas Veterans Commission to see if there's any possibility for them to draw, draw down any additional funding from the federal funding package. But in the meantime, those would be demands that would go to general assistance in the absence of veterans funding.
Irene, the city's having similar challenges, closing their senior centers, and they're working close with the schools. So are you in touch with anybody from the city? Because these schools are helping out with a lot of the food that they have available because of the closing and?
Right, right.
Are you working close with the city?
We are, we are working closely with the City of El Paso. They're going to have the sites available to us. They've closed to the general public and the seniors, but the sites will be available to the county, staff, and our partners for this distribution. And so we're working closely with them on, on all these other amenities that we're going to try to pursue.
Thank you, Irene.
You know, in some, in some of the more rural areas, you know, I mean, I've been concerned just because they have limited access to grocery stores, and with the run on supplies, you know, I think seniors are the most vulnerable. You know, can you just, I guess as El Pasoans Fighting Hunger is looking at sites and the potential distribution sites for not just those that participate in our programs, but the public at large? Is that something that, you know, you can just make sure that the locations that they're selecting aren't just large distribution sites like the Coliseum, but also are accessible to those in rural communities that are rather remote, you know, from, from locations like the Coliseum? And, and, you know, seeing in this emergency circumstance, if, you know, El Pasoans Fighting Hunger is providing a very vital service at this critical time, you know, we previously discussed providing funding to them for this, but I mean, you know, working with them to see if perhaps, you know, maybe some, you know, an emergency allocation of funding might be appropriate in this circum- you know, an emergency allocation of funding might be appropriate in this circumstance. Just because they are providing a critical service to seniors in particular then.
Absolutely.
Agreed.
So El Pasoans Fighting Hunger is mobilizing five large strategically-located mass distribution sites. But I have discussed with them about making our county sites, for example, we have our Fabens Nutrition Center, we have Montana Vista, we have Canotillo, some of these areas on our more rural locations as many distribution sites to be able to target some of these more rural areas where folks cannot necessarily drive up to the larger sites like the Coliseum or any other. So we're discussing many distribution sites for the public at large as well as the larger strategically-located mass distribution sites as well.
And, you know, the faith-based communities are very open. Pretty much the infrastructure they had for the refugees, they're offering something very similar. So anything that we could do to put you in touch with them?
Okay.
Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon Judge and Commissioners, I just wanted to make you all aware and especially make the public aware, we do have some communications efforts that we were going to kick off this afternoon with members of the SBA, SBDC, Texas Department of Economics and so on. And so we're hoping to pull together not only our government partners, but we also have some phone calls scheduled with banks and lending partners as well. So the idea would be that when all of this, you know, starts hopefully subsiding, that we do have some sort of a plan for local support that we can provide through the Economic Development Office to our local businesses. So hopefully, we'll have a little bit more information for you all next week. But most of these phone calls will take place this afternoon. So we're really hoping to act quickly so that we can get ahead of this.
Thank you Andrea.
Veronica, you had some good updates on the golf course that you guys were doing?
Good morning Judge Commissioners, Veronica Myers, Parks and Recreation Director. And I just wanted to address the parks and the golf course. During this critical time, it's very important that, I mean, people are, it's a good thing too and people are going to go out there looking for an alternative place to go to physical fitness and be outdoors with their families. So they are going out to the parks, it's open space. And we have canceled all tournaments right now at the golf course, but we are still open at the golf course. We only do tee times, so there is no shotgun starts or anything like that. We're limiting the amount of the use of the clubhouse. So if anybody comes in, they can take their food with them. But we're restricting it as well to less than 50 and there's rarely ever 50 people there at one time. Anyway, so just to address that concern, if anybody has any concern. And of course, we've heightened the cleaning and using antibacterial hand soaps and just hygiene, heighten our hygiene around the golf course because we know a lot of our population are seniors. So we are taking a lot of precautions at the golf course so that people can still come and use the open space.
Veronica, I have asked to see what other golf courses are doing. Could you, did you have any information?
We sure did, and I went ahead and sent that to Nicole as well as everybody over the weekend. So a lot of golf courses are saying, doing the same thing that we're doing, just heightening the awareness of, they're doing tournaments. They're still holding tournaments, but no shotgun starts. They're all tee times, just like if everybody were to go out on their own and play. There is no sharing of golf clubs or anything like that. They've heightened the cleanliness as well as we have done. And pretty much that has been it, they haven't closed them down.
Thank you Veronica.
Commissioner Shat, one other thing I forgot to mention was that we, they've also suspended visitation at the jails.
Veronica, you had something else?
Next, I want to introduce my colleague, Jose Landeros, Planning and Development.
Thank you.
Good morning Judge Commissioners, Jose Landeros with the Planning and Development Department. Just to provide you an update on what we're planning on doing here in our downtown office, we will be going to a skeleton crew. The services that are largely affected with that are permitting processes, including certificates of compliance which affect utility connection. We're in close coordination with El Paso Water, El Paso Electric, who utilize a certificate to actually provide that connection service for residents. But because of the scaling back and reduction in operations that each of the utilities is having, we're following that suit as well. We're transitioning to identify the staff that can work remotely and including plan review. All of that, we're notifying all of the design engineers to begin to email us copies of the plans as opposed to coming downtown and submitting rules of plans for our review here. Lastly, as it affects transit, beginning last week, our vendor began hypercleaning the vehicles as was instructed by corporate. They actually sent down additional cleaning supplies. And so the buses are being cleaned at every opportunity at a heightened level just to ensure that seating areas within those common spaces, you know, a lot of people, it's their only option to get from A to B to provide those necessary services is seeking out medical care, we're buying groceries. And so those buses are being cleaned out in suit with other mass transit authorities and mass transit operations across the county or the community or the country as well. And then in speaking with Mr. Ferni Hernandez, the Infrastructure Services Director, operations will remain unaffected at the warehouses for the time being. But in the event that there is any change in that, we'll make sure to update the court.
Thank you Jose.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning Judge Commissioners, Ferni Hernandez. As Jose mentioned, you know, we are running as business as usual for our water and bridge operations and our water department operations. The only thing that we might be affected is the, our next community cleanup that's being held on the first weekend of April. That one's going to be assessed as we get closer and we might bring that up to the court for consideration of closure. At that time, we'll come back and present that at a different time just to see how things are going to, are playing out. But for infrastructure, we are business as usual. We're on call 24 hours a day. If anything that comes up, we'll be reactive accordingly.
Thank you.
Thank you, so I think we're going to move to the court systems at this point. Thanks everyone for their updates. One of the things that I will tell you that I'm just completely impressed with was the reaction that the court system has. They have a very robust subcommittee that they've created. And I participated in that on Friday. And I know that, I think that we lost some of them to the time. I don't know if anybody's here that could give an update?
Yeah, they just, Amy just walked out.
But they're extremely robust and I've seen that they've been in contact with the court.
Good morning Judge.
Good morning.
Commissioners, Caroline Martinez, I'm here on behalf of the Probation Department in El Paso. My report from Maggie basically just wanted us to let you know that we are, our offices are still operational. However, we have suspended, or we will be suspending the reporting until April 1st in order to avoid any kind of traffic going in and out. But we are working with protocols on video conferencing or emailing for the clients and their reporting so that we keep in contact with them.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Joanne, on that childcare, I just got information from Dr. Sylvia Costa. And they're very interested in how they can partner for any childcare from the YWCA. So I'll look into that and see if we can.
That would be great, thank you.
Thank you.
I spoke to Judge Josh Shidera and he mentioned to me that we may not need the standing order that I mentioned earlier. He did state that the Office of Court Administration has given the authority to postpone matters. So as far as the Justice of the Peace Precinct 3, they will not be entertaining any evictions. He said he will let me know by the end of the day if any other of the justices of peace will be in part. He did say he did speak to Judge Hagerty. So I know for sure he is speaking to him, he did send him an email. So I will be letting you all know by the end of the day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
His encouragement will be very much appreciated.
All right, so next slide please. So finally, this is just a summary of the recommendations that we'd come up with from Friday's committee meeting. Most of which you've taken, you've taken action on or we've addressed here. So I won't necessarily go through all of those unless anyone, anything jumps out to you. A primary concern was communication, ensuring that we're all talking to each other as much as we possibly can. And that's something that I'm hoping that I can help facilitate. The next slide talks about some, I think it's more of a placeholder for us. It was, can you go to the next slide please? Consideration summary. So these are items that I don't think we really made a determination on, but it was things that the court might want to consider over, either now or in the future. It was ideas about the board meetings, which already had some discussion and action taken on. There was questions about how do we deal with undocumented population care, issues surrounding the port of entry, events management, size limitations, cancellations. Some of these are a little bit behind what's already occurred. Emergency funding and then public assistance. So I don't know if there's anything else that the court would like to talk to if they like to talk about this. This is really the extent of the update that we have for you today. Again, we'll be back as often as we need to to be able to update you on, as events change and we need your guidance and action.
Chris, thank you.
You're welcome.
Great work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Judge Commissioners, there are a couple items that I just want to follow up and make sure we understand from your staff perspective. So we, if someone calls and wants a resolution on the agenda in the next couple of weeks, normally we refer them to your offices. Do you all want us to let them know that you all aren't doing them for a couple of weeks and to go ahead and contact your offices?
That'd be, you know, in alignment with not us generating more people into the, to Commissioners' court. Obviously, the resolution is the one that brings a lot of people, so we have to adhere to that. So yeah, if we could sort of play by ear at this point as to how far we want to push that out.
And then on Thursday of this week, you have a pretty heavy agenda. And there are items on there that we can postpone if you all would like. Some of the things we do have is we do have interviews for your hospital district board appointees. I don't know if you all want to proceed with that. You also have, we do have consultants coming in or we're trying to see if we can have them attend electronically. But right now, we have consultants for the TTI, for the proposed route service improvement and sites for the installation of bus shelters and stops. We have a presentation with our consultant Atkins Global. I believe they're not local, is that correct, Jose?
Yeah, we've already coordinated for this too.
Do it electronically, okay. And then we have HOK on the agenda for the downtown jail study and they're going to attend electronically?
Yes.
And of course, if there's any of these you all would like us to postpone, we just want to make arrangements with individuals who would be planning to attend. The downtown, an update presentation on the downtown historical survey and providing feedback on the historical commission's proposed changes. And then Commissioner Pettis has a presentation on east side growth patterns. We have a presentation from our Criminal Justice Coordination Department. And an update on, they'll also be giving an update on Goal 1 under the strategic plan. And then an update on capital projects and associated bond funding. And we're, Wally, do we have anyone attending from out of town on that?
No.
And then, and the interviews, that's it? So if there's anything on there that the court would like to, we have, actually, there's a couple other things on there, but they're internal.
My item can be postponed, it's not a.
Any other?
I was also wondering if at some point, we could get an update from the hospitals, the hospital district about kind of what's, what they're doing? And because I, and I've heard that there's limitations on visitors possibly and at the hospital, at the children's hospital. And so, just so that we can provide more information to the public about how things are running and what's going on at the hospital district.
Okay.
As it pertains to the hospital district interviews, does the holdover provision, I know that there's term limits, does a holdover provision apply to them?
Yes, they'll stay on until.
I mean, I wonder if that, I mean, just considering that they're our most experienced board members that have served as previous chairs, if it's probably just prudent to hold that off and have them as holdovers during this period rather than having someone go through an orientation process and especially with what the hospital's going through, just keeping them in holdover status for perhaps a couple of months?
Okay, so we could postpone the interviews from Thursday? And if it's the pleasure of the court? And I believe during, I do believe that under, and correct me if I'm wrong, under our existing items, could we have the hospital come update? UMC come update regarding El Paso County's preparation and response for COVID-19?
We could fit them in under that item, I think.
So we'll reach out to the hospital district for an update. I'll ask the sheriff for an update on the jails and I'll follow up on the JP, status of the JP orders for Thursday. And then postpone the presentation from Commissioner Pettis. If you all are okay, we could postpone the presentation on the update to the strategic plan because we just gave you an update? And we could postpone that for one month if you're okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, and then.
And for the, for the updates on the hospital and the sheriff, I'm not saying necessarily that they need to show up and, but I mean, if we can just reach out to them and if they send an update by email, but we can just talk about it a little bit at the, at the meeting and give information that's pertinent to the public. I mean, just to kind of minimize on how many people are going to be participating and in a small enclosed space.
Okay, perfect.
We're actually moving it here, right? We're having the.
We moved it into this room for more space.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. But we can go through and see if there's anything else that could possibly.
Yeah, Commissioner Bill?
As we move forward, and by the way, Chris, great presentation. It looks like we're moving in the right direction as far as being prepared. But if things don't improve, if they continue to get worse, have we started any kind of pre-planning as to services that we need to cut? Or what do we do? But I'd like to be prepared, hopefully not, we won't use it. But I sure would like to have it ready in case we do need it.
Commissioner, I can tell you, Nicole's done absolutely fantastic job of assisting, co-facilitating this with me. One of the first things that she did was issue out kind of a, kind of a one-page coop request from each department head to go through and kind of identify which, what are our essential services and what timeframe we needed to do. And those are extremely valuable and we've already kind of started seeing these rolling in. So I think that's going to be the first thing is to identify what services absolutely have to go on. And my praise for the court system, I can't be any, I can't give any more because they're really doing that job of seeing what do they do about hearings and how can they do things electronically? And they're already really moving, moving well on that. And I think all the departments are in that mindset of what's essential and what things can we maybe not focus on at this time.
Okay, no, that's great to hear.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you Nicole.
Something else, our county attorney's office is, I believe, is working on implementing with Judge Tom Diego during this time. I want to refer to Christina, but is also to help us track and be better prepared for the future by creating a list and a numbering system, I believe, of orders that are issued.
So as you all are aware, the judge issued the disaster declaration on Friday. That is within the county judge's authority, that is good for seven days. So on your agenda for Thursday is the extension of that declaration of disaster. And that has to be approved by law by the Commissioners' court. And it extends for an additional 30 days. And then we go, we come back and then we revisit that as well. In conjunction with that local disaster declaration, there were also some additional orders by the county judge that came down. So you received notification via Celeste, I believe, yesterday or on Friday. It's hard to keep track of all the flurry of emails that have been going down. But some of those additional orders that came down from the county judge included the moratorium on any employee travel for any work-related business. The other that had come down was the cancellation of county-related events, I believe at Ascari Te and at Sports Park as well. And so those are considered orders. And what our suggestion, and in order to track that and to ensure that the public is aware of what is coming from the county, is that we put those in writing. So we would indicate that it would be order number one, all county events have been canceled in writing, and then we would provide it to Chris Dathas and his team so that they can go ahead and. so that they can go ahead and post that on the main website for the public. Order number two, for example, would be the cancellation of the, of the employee travel until further notice. I am not hearing today, but if there is further discussion later, either today or even on Thursday, if the court is or the judge is considering restrictions on crowd gatherings that they've done in other jurisdictions, I believe CDC had recommended no more than 50 individuals in any public gathering, that could also be part of an order. But that would be an additional order, so we would, we would number that. We are working on creating those orders in writing. And as they, they come down, we'll have the judge sign them, provide them to you so that we can ensure that we are organized, the public is organized, and that information is consistent to ensure that everybody's getting the same information. Things are happening, are happening rapidly, and we want to make sure that the public is well-advised in terms of what's coming down, specifically as it pertains to the county.
Thank you, Christine.
Thank you.
Item number nine, human resources. Discuss and take appropriate action regarding one new court coordinator, GS 28, positioned for the Council of Judges Jail Magistration Court for an impact of $76,938. Funding is available in general funds, G admin, operation contingencies.
Can we come back to this item, please?
Item number 10, public works. Receive a presentation regarding the update to the county's 2010 stormwater master plan from AECOM, the project engineering consultant.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. So set on notice with the Planning and Development Department. Happy to be able to introduce Mr. Gilbert Andujo, the project manager from AECOM, who is assigned to this project. And we also have our AECOM consultants from out of town, from Austin, participating via Microsoft Teams, which is that software that Mr. Stathis just previously described, will soon have access to. So with that, I'll go and turn it over to Mr. Andujo.
Thank you, Mr. Landeros. Like Mr. Landeros said, my name is Gilbert Andujo. I'm the project manager for this project. I am out of the El Paso office. We are located here in El Paso in the Wells Fargo Building in Suite 700. Just a brief recap here of where we are before we get this presentation going. This project started last year, February of 2019. During that time, we've, we've done different components of the project, which led us to our first public meeting, which was held at the ESD Number Two, which is ZS Montana Fire Station on November 8th, 2019. After that, we did, we did attend a, a neighborhood association meeting. And from there, we continued working. We did have a presentation to Commissioners Court, which was held in December of last year. With that, we also held a public meeting, Number Two, which was held there in the Commissioners Court foyer or, or office space, which has led us to now, to, to do our second presentation to Commissioners Court. And in light of the events, we've had to do it remotely now. And we'll be doing it through Microsoft Teams application. With that being said, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Clint Kimball out of our Austin office. Thank you.
Thank you, Gilbert.
Hello, Commissioners. I've taken the time to allow me to get my presentation remotely from my location in Austin and allowing me to maintain my social distancing. So let me switch my screen over to share with you my presentation. Again, as Gilbert said, this is Number Two out of three presentations we intend to be giving regarding the update of the county stormwater master plan. Just to give you an overview of the topics I'll be covering, I'll, I'll try to be brief, not to take too much of your time. But we'll, I'm going to give you a recap of the stormwater master plan and the update we're performing, a description of the project comparison and analysis that we've been busily working on. I will go over a few specific projects, just as examples, and then discuss the next steps and follow-up action items. So first, as a review, the stormwater master plan, as it currently exists, was completed in 2010. And it includes a list of many different flood mitigation projects or strategies. This includes dams, basins, detention basins, channel improvements, and culvert crossings. And these are designed to mitigate not only flooding due to stormwaters, but also the sediment debris that they carry from the hillsides through the Arroyos. So a, a lot of these projects, they were designed specifically for containment of the sediment. Or in the case of crossings, we, the stormwater master plan includes enlarging of the culverts or constructing of new bridges, for instance. Many different projects, 19 dams, 10 basins, 27 crossing improvements, 12 channel improvements over the different study areas that you see on this map here. So now, 10 years have passed, and the county has elected us to update the stormwater master plan. And this update has been focused in four specific areas. Number one, resizing these projects to account for the increased rainfall due to the, the publication that came out from NOAA last year, Atlas 14, has slightly higher rainfalls in the El Paso area. This update includes updating the cost estimates for the projects. 10 years have passed. Things are more expensive now, so taking that into consideration. We've added several new projects in the Montana sector area, which is what you see in the northeastern corner there. Couple basins, one dam, and multiple culvert crossings. And we've taken five of these projects in specific and redesigned them based on new conditions that exist and developments that have occurred that have necessitated the change of those designs. So the big question arises, how do you prioritize these projects? How do you choose which one to do first? There are so many. Which ones are the most important? And to do this, one thing we have done is we've, we've boiled down these projects into what we've called major projects, which includes all the dams or basins that are over 1 million in cost, which is almost all of them. We've looked at standalone channel improvements, which means recommended improvements to channels that are not tied to a dam improvement or tied to other projects, but that mitigate the flooding by themselves. We've grouped projects together in cases where the benefits of one project is codependent on the benefits of another. We've counted those as one single combined project. And the result has been 27 major projects, as you can see on the map. We've looked at these projects. We've tallied the costs and some of the benefits. The, the values highlighted in yellow here are costs that we have performed an estimate for. So we've looked at all the, the costs, meaning the cost of construction and maintenance. And we've looked at select benefits, particularly benefits to structures and benefits to agricultural areas. What we've done is it, it's an approximate analysis of these benefits. To, to perform a, or to create a grant application, you would typically consider all the benefits and all the costs, which is a rigorous process, could take a lot of time to perform, even for a single project. But to assist in comparing these for the purposes of planning, we've looked at the two that we felt were most likely to have the largest impact on these projects. And that is the, the benefits to structures and agriculture. The other values highlighted in blue are benefits that could be significant. But we didn't look at them in detail because we expect them to impact all the projects relatively the same. So those values in blue, they, they could, you know, increase the level of benefit with respect to costs that we're aware of, but they won't change the priority, at least not in any major way. And alternatively, of course, there's always the option of, rather than spending the money on a flood mitigation project, to instead buy out all the houses that are impacted. Not always the most desirable option, but it is one on the table and one that we looked at in our last presentation that we gave in December. So the new analysis that we performed since December is an assessment of the benefits to agricultural areas, which wasn't done previously. Some of these dams or basins or culvert improvements are in heavily agriculture areas, not ones with a lot of structures. So if you're going to do a benefit-cost analysis that was comprehensive, that allowed you to assess all the projects countywide equally, you'd want to consider the agricultural benefits for some of these. This slide shows a case of a property that was flooded in August of 2017. We received a report from the owner of this property, gave some values of, of actual repair costs that, you know, he incurred after this storm. He experienced damage to his home and property. He experienced sediment debris flow, as expected from a major storm such as this one, in his pecan farms, which exist in his property. He, he reported mental and emotional stress, of course, but no reported pecan crop loss, which is also expected. A sediment flow wouldn't likely damage a crop that is 20 feet off the ground, for instance. So we were able to factor in all of this information to create the best possible assessment of benefits to agricultural areas, including the list of costs to both his home structure and to his agricultural lands. What are the goals of a benefit-cost analysis? Well, we want to see which of those 27 projects, or 27 major projects that I listed earlier, are likely to be the most cost-effective and which ones are most likely to receive grant funding. Both questions that are of great interest to the county. The way we do this is by calculating the, what's called the benefit-cost ratio, which is very simply the benefits divided by the cost. It's a simple fraction. And what we're looking for here are certain thresholds. The first being a benefit-cost ratio higher than 0.75. Once the benefits are 75% of the cost, then the mental stress and anxiety benefits kick in. Those actually can be quantified based off of estimated time of therapy hours and cost of therapist. FEMA actually has methods for quantifying this. But it doesn't kick in until the benefit-cost ratio reaches that value. Once it gets to 75%, that alone could be enough to get it the rest of the way to 1.0, which is the threshold, which is the minimum requirement for receiving Texas Water Development Board grant funding. The results, these are all 27 major projects that I showed earlier. You can see the first column is the, the identifier of the project, the total cost, whether it be a dam, basin, culvert crossing, some are more expensive than others. That cost in terms of annual cost, in case we were to go out for a bond measure, you know, what would it cost annually? We looked at the structure benefits, the agricultural benefits, as I, as I described, and the total benefits and the benefit-cost ratio. So here you see benefit-cost ratios ranging from 2.93 all the way down to zero. And the top five I would like to highlight in particular, because these are all, these all have a benefit-cost ratio higher than 0.6, which means once you count the benefits to roadways, they're likely to get up to 0.75, in which case the mental stress and anxiety benefits kick in and get all the way up to one. So, so the top five are the projects that are most likely to be eligible for grant funding. So to give you an idea of what types of projects these are, here are their locations on a map. You can see the five spread out across the county. And, and you can see some of these might be more low-hanging fruit than others. HAC 7 in the southern end is 3 million, which is on the lower end of cost, but has by far the highest benefit-cost ratio, well over one. I'm going to walk you through each of these five projects very briefly. HAC 7, the number one cost-effective project, includes the construction of two dams, embankments with clay core, a little bit of excavation. As you can see, the benefits are to a large area of pecan farms, mostly agricultural benefits. SSA 1 is up in the Sparks area. It's also the construction of an embankment, a very large embankment, a very expensive project, 34 million by our estimates. But despite the high cost, also has a very high benefit-cost ratio because of all the benefits to the agricultural areas that you can see and several houses in the, the 1% annual chance flood plain. SOC 1 and SOC 2 are two projects from the stormwater master plan that are codependent, that are interconnected, that are along the same streamline. So we would expect these to be designed and constructed together. They're both, well, SOC 1 is construction of a new embankment. SOC 2 is the repair of an existing embankment that has experienced significant damage and no longer functions as an embankment. SSA 4, this is one that we redesigned recently to account for new plan development that has occurred since the last stormwater master plan. There is still a little bit of room to construct a new basin, a very large basin, but one that would have very high benefits. And then one project over in Canetito. This project would be simply constructing a new concrete line channel, one that could convey the sediment and allow water to pass without flooding these properties that are adjacent to it. This is strictly benefits to, to residential areas, not to agricultural ones. So what are the next steps? We've completed the analysis. We, we've seen what the new benefit-cost ratios are. We've redesigned several projects. We've updated the costs and the designs. The next step is to update the stormwater master plan document itself. This is what we have planned for the Phase 2 contract, which the county has approved. And this, this new contract will include not only updating the stormwater master plan, but also one public meeting to solicit feedback from, from residents on the draft stormwater master plan. So it will include a few phases of review and submit all of the final stormwater master plan. So to see what that looks like in a timeline, assuming notice to proceed on developing the, the new document is April 1st, we expect to give one more presentation to, to you around May 11th and submit the final stormwater master plan on June 19th. So with that, I'll open it up to questions. Let me switch back to my face.
Commissioners, questions? Betsy, anybody?
So I guess one of my questions would be, in all the recommendations, in the, in this case, it's the actual construction, not the buyouts.
Yes, these costs include construction. There are alternatively buyout costs, which I didn't include in this presentation. We included in the last one. But those will also be listed in the, updated stormwater master plan.
So to, to speak to that point, Mrs. Keller, the, for the projects that are, that have BCRs lower than what we may be able to secure grant funding for, those might be the projects where we look at the cost of the infrastructure versus the cost of relocation.
Okay. Thank you, Jose.
Thank you, Clint. You, I hope someone snapped a picture, because you look like the great and powerful Oz right here in the Commissioners courtroom with the way that you set up, yeah.
Gilbert, thank you.
Thanks to Miguel for facilitating this meeting.
Yes, yeah, and a big shout out to ITED, as this is going to be the, the norm for the next few weeks. And so we're glad that this first one went so smoothly.
It did. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gilbert. Thank you.
We'd like to go ahead and take up item number 13, Judge.
Yes, please.
Item 13, discuss and take appropriate action regarding the variance request from El Paso County Subdivision Order for the Tierra de la Este 3 Phase 6 land study.
Good afternoon, Judge and Commissioners. So set on notice with the Planning and Development Department. The item before you is a variance request from the landowner of the Tierra de la Este 3 Phase 6 land study. Next slide, please. This is located in precinct number three in the East Montana area, near the intersection of Edgemere and Tim Floyd. The water and wastewater provider for the proposed development is going to be El Paso Water. And they are requesting three things where they are varying from our county standards. The first is to reduce the right-of-way, the minimum right-of-way for a street from 60 feet to the county minimum 54 feet. Reduce the minimum lot size from 6,000 to, it should be 4,700 square feet. And then to allow traffic circles and roundabout improvements within the roadways. Next slide.
Before you go off of that one?
Yes, sir.
I've got a question. What's the difference between a circle and a roundabout?
So a roundabout is usually neighborhood-oriented. So if you had a residential street intersecting with a residential street, you would see these to, so they're smaller traffic circles or more akin to what you see on Paisano, at the intersection of Paisano and Alameda, where you have these large traffic circles that sometimes work as a network with each other. So that's the, that's the main difference between a circle and a, and a roundabout.
Okay. Thanks.
This is the aerial location of the proposed development. You can see to the west of the subject property is the city of El Paso. And then to the east of the subject property is Montana Vista. So that stretch of desert that is very popular during the Fourth of July year, when there are no restrictions on fireworks, is being proposed to be developed by the property owner. Next slide, please. The exhibit that was provided was rather large, so we, we broke it up into two slides. This first slide, the orange-colored lots are all the proposed commercial. The blue are the regional ponds. The green are the park sites. And then every other color are lots. The parks... park sites. And then every other color are lots. The park sites are actually going to be maintained 100% by the city of El Paso, according to the city ordinance that regulates development. These park sites are located within the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction as well as the city's annexation path. So as a result of that, the city will be maintaining these park sites. Next slide. Here you can see the bottom of that. And so what bisects the figure that we put here is actually Edgemere Boulevard, which was a project that the county executed through a private development agreement with the landowner to actually expedite the construction of Edgemere Boulevard. So the road is already there, and then you'll see development to the north and to the south. Next slide. With that, Planning and Development recommends approval of the variance request from the El Paso County subdivision order for the Tierra de la Este 3 Phase 6 land study, as the subject property conforms to 2014 County Alternative Design Standards and Appendix 3 to the county subdivision order. With that, happy to take any questions the court may have. We also have Mr. Conrad Conde, a representative from the property owner here, to answer any questions that the court may have.
Commissioner Perez.
Thanks, Jose. I know at one point that there was consideration of a PID for this. Is that in any way tied to the variance, or is there any way that that could be tied to the variance? What's the latest on the status of the PID?
So the Public Improvement District is still being proposed by the developer. It's a separate issue related to what they've proposed here today. The variance request takes into account the development style, the size of lots, distribution of streets, access to parks. And so they've met all those standards. The Public Improvement District or the PID is a taxing entity that the Commissioner's Court may consider establishing to allow to the collection of additional revenue that may go towards maintenance of landscape enhancements within the roadways. If there's a road that perhaps is oversized to accommodate, instead of building half of the road, maybe the developer constructs the entire portion of the road. And so that excess requirement would be paid for from the PID. So that issue is still separate. It is obviously related to this, but there's nothing within the subdivision order or the alternative design standards that allow us to consider or make a recommendation to the court about the Public Improvement District as it relates to the proposed variance request. But that is something that is coming forth for the court to consider.
So there's no way it can be tied to the variance request to the court?
Right. So what's been submitted by the developer meets the minimum standards. The effect that not approving the PID might have would be that perhaps the medians aren't landscaped. There might be some other improvements within the right-of-way that have to be foregone in lieu of, because the PID would have been the mechanism that the developer wanted to capture some of that. Or the county agrees to accept the maintenance of that cost internally to, with either Parks and Recreation or through Infrastructure Services. So that conversation is with legal right now. We've notified legal of this upcoming establishment of a taxing district and the various mechanisms and tools that the court may actually be able to use to create that and then generate revenue from the development to actually pay for the ongoing maintenance for streets, some of the landscaping improvements within the medians and the street right-of-ways. But at this time, there's nothing that would allow us as staff to make a recommendation to the court, other than what we've already recommended here today.
But could there be in the future an adjustment to the variance policy or such to do that?
Yes. Yeah. So the next item that we're going to be considering is the update to the subdivision order. And so language, we'll be looking at completely updating our subdivision order. And so additional requirements on variance requests and things like that are possible. But at this time, this is what's present in the code right now.
And just to be clear, the developer is still interested in pursuing that option of the PID? That's still very much part of the?
Yes. The landowner has expressed interest in pursuing with that. And so we're engaging the county attorney's office, because we have never, as an agency, seen something like that established here. And there's been close coordination with the city of El Paso, because the city of El Paso actually has the authority, per the authorizing statute of public improvement districts, to object to the creation of a PID within their respective ETJ. And so the city council is considering a resolution to formally indicate that they would not object to establishing a PID. So we await the outcome of that to allow the county to figure out its next steps and how we proceed before presenting that information to the court.
Move to approve. Second.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Judge Commissioners.
Thank you, Jose.
Item number 11, approve and authorize the county judge to electronically sign the required grant agreement documents for the $1 million Colonia funds construction from Texas Department of Agriculture to construct a first-time wastewater system within El Conquistador del Paso and Lourdes Estates near Favens, Texas, benefiting approximately 96 homes. Contract number 2019-0193. Further approve and authorize the county judge to sign the interlocal agreement with Lower Valley Water District to provide design services and cash match in an amount not to exceed $958,888 for the construction of wastewater system improvements in the project area. Contract number 2019-0841. No county funds are required.
Good afternoon, Judge and Commissioners. So Selon Nettos with the Planning and Development Department. The item before you is for the approval of a grant contract with the Texas Department of Agriculture in the amount of $1 million for the construction of first-time sewer service for the areas that are there up on your screen, Lourdes Estates and El Conquistador del Paso subdivisions, which are located just outside of Favens to the west of Favens proper. The area has been identified by the Lower Valley Water District as a high priority. So this is a partnership grant whereby the county will receive the grant, manage the grant, and then at such time that the improvements are complete, the system and the improvements will be dedicated over to the county. This is in line with the practices that the county has used for the past 12 years to secure grant funding from various agencies at the federal and state level to help assist residents in the colonias with first-time water and wastewater service. This is actually more a $2.99 million project. The additional funds are actually being pledged by Lower Valley Water District as cash match, and the district will also incur the costs of acquiring a consultant to do the design and engineering work necessary prior to construction of this project. This is similar to the agreement that the county had with Lower Valley Water District in a grant that we just closed out last year in 2019 for the improvements to wastewater service in the Morning Glory Phases 1 and 2 project, similar amount, similar setup. So we're glad that we can continue to partner with Lower Valley Water District to enhance the quality of life and promote health through the implementation of first-time sewer service in these colonias. With that, we'd ask the court's favorable consideration. I'm happy to take any questions the court may have.
Motion to approve. Second.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 12, approve and authorize the county judge to sign the interlocal agreement for the provision of professional engineering services to El Paso County from the city of Socorro for the update of the county subdivision design standards and subdivision order in the amount of $499,672.84. Further authorize the transfer of funds in the amount of $250,000 designated for completion of the Community Infrastructure Improvement Plan to fully fund the subdivision standards update. Funding is available in General Fund, Public Works Administrative Contract Services General, contract number 2020-0079.
Good afternoon, Judge and Commissioners. So Selon Nettos with the Planning and Development Department. There are two actions that approval of this item would mean for the court today. The first, as described by Ms. Contreras, is the approval of the interlocal agreement with the city of Socorro for the engineering services to actually update the county subdivision order and the county subdivision design standards. The subdivision order was most recently updated in 2014 with the addition of the alternative design standards that are referenced in the previous variance request. Short of that, the standards have been in place since 2001 with little to no update. The design standards actually are the engineering documents that inform design engineers, landowners, and developers what exactly is required and how they should construct and build the neighborhoods for tomorrow in the unincorporated area. And that document has also largely gone without updates since its original adoption in the early 90s. So both are long overdue, and the agreement with the city of Socorro is an attempt to ensure that we partner with our municipal agencies in the area, because one of the issues that we continually hear from the development community is that there are different standards for different agencies, and we all need to be on the same page. We have informed the city of El Paso and other agencies, including other municipalities. We've also informed the development community through their design engineers, contacts, materials contacts, that the county is about to embark on this process to ensure that we involve everyone from day one to have success in updating our standards. So that is what the interlocal agreement with the city of Socorro entails. The second action would be that the court had identified a quarter of a million dollars for this subdivision order update with the intent of funding part of it in one fiscal year and then funding the second part in the preceding fiscal year. However, there are $250,000 additional dollars that were identified for the Community Infrastructure Improvement Plan, which is a document that was intended to describe where infrastructure improvements should be targeted throughout the unincorporated areas. But within the public works departments, we've engaged in a number of studies, and the court received an update last February, actually detailing how there were a number of individual studies ongoing that were going to accomplish what the community infrastructure plan had envisioned. Where do we put sidewalks? Where do we target road investments? Where do the areas that need improvements to parks? And so we have a number of studies, like the Thoroughfare Plan, like the Stormwater Master Plan, like the Parks Regional Plan currently underway. And so that funding, to fund a study would be duplicative. So what we're also asking is that the court just acknowledge the fact that we would like to use that $250,000 to fully fund the cost of implementing the subdivision order update. So it doesn't require the reappropriation of any funds in another fiscal year. It's just an acknowledgement that we will be using funds for one study that is no longer necessary in staff's opinion to complete the subdivision order update. So with that, we would ask for the court's favorable consideration. And as always, available to take any questions the court may have.
Commissioner Perez.
I imagine that this plan would take into consideration the court's desire to adopt more green practices, recycle materials, other things that would help.
Right. So at this point, we have a scope of work, and we have an interlocal agreement. And once we actually get going, a lot of that is going to be stakeholder engagement, which is obviously going to be led, most importantly, by the Commissioner's Court. So we want to hear what the intent is. The court has discussed raising the minimum lot size. The court has discussed other issues with materials. So we want to make sure that we take all that, give that information to our design consultant, and ensure that they incorporate that into what's ultimately proposed and provide scenarios and alternatives for the court's consideration when the time comes for adoption. So I guess it will.
Betsy, have any additional comments? Or Norma? No?
No, sir. We did, we had also asked that we reach out to some of the individuals during this that would be interested in those greener practices in our standards.
Motion to approve. Second.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Judge Commissioners.
Thank you, Jose.
Item number 14, Budget and Finance. Approve Amendment Number 22 to the County of El Paso's 2019 through 2020 operating budget. This budgetary amendment will increase grants by $175,000, thus increasing the overall budget of $474,816,736 to $474,991,736. Further approve and authorize a reallocation of 2012 bond funds included in this amendment to allow for the acquisition and renovation of a downtown property as permitted in the 2012 bond order.
Good afternoon, Judge Commissioners. Wally Hargrove from the Office of Budget and Fiscal Policy. The supporting documentation for this week's highlight was sent to you with last week's email. I would also like to ask that you permit me to amend this week's amendment in light of a recent activity. We'd ask that you allow us to transfer $100,000 from our GADMIN Ops contingency account into the newly created GF Admin COVID-19 Ops expense account for any emergency expenditures that may be necessary in the immediate future. With that, I'm available for any questions.
Move to approve with the amendment to the amendment. Second.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
I'd like to go ahead and go back to item number nine, Human Resources. Discuss and take appropriate action regarding one new court coordinator, GS 28, position for the Council of Judges Jail Magistration Court for an impact of $76,938. Funding is available in General Funds, G Admin, Operations Contingencies.
Judge Commissioners, I'm covering this item for Melissa. She's back implementing the information from earlier today. So when we did the analysis on the jail magistration enhancement project, and we brought that to you all last month, we had imagined that this position would be organized in a different manner. And when, in looking at actually implementing it, it was not possible to do this other alternate solution. So we are asking, as part of this process and to complete the enhancement to magistration, that this position be approved out of those operations contingencies for a court coordinator for jail magistrate. We've discussed this with the jail mag, with the administrative judge and the executive director, and they are supportive of this request.
Where are we in the process?
So this would be, as far as where we are in the jail magistration process?
In that position, it's been interviewed. I mean, we're?
Oh, no, sir. We haven't done anything. This is to create the position.
Create the position.
Yes, sir. It's needed as part of the overall enhancement to jail magistration. Originally, you may recall, it was originally budgeted, expected to come in at somewhere between $1.5 to $1.6 million. HR has reviewed, went and did exhaustive studies on work processes and on staffing. Everyone came to the table and was willing to try alternate ideas. Just in this particular situation, we were not able to work out an alternative method. So we do need this position to help with the jail magistration. To help manage the dockets.
Need anything reflected in the motion?
What we need in the motion is just to approve one new court coordinator position for the Council of Judges jail magistration.
Move to approve. Second.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
This now brings us to item number 15, Executive Session. Commissioners' Court will recess into executive session to discuss items 15A through 15E pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071, 551.072, 551.074, and 551.087. Commissioners' Court will reconvene to take official action. Commissioners, Corvoo reconvene to take official action.
All county offices will be closed on Tuesday, March 31st in observance of the S.S. Chavez holiday. All county offices will reopen on Wednesday, April 1st, 2020.
Hi, this is County Judge Samaniego. The 2020 census count is incredibly important for El Paso. It helps our school, healthcare, food, and housing programs get the money they need.
This is County Commissioner Vince Perez for Precinct 3. With your participation, the programs that support affordable housing, public education, and affordable healthcare can receive the funding they deserve.
This is Commissioner Carl Robinson, Precinct 4. Without you, these programs could not be successful.
This is Commissioner David Stout. Participate online, by phone, or by mail. Everyone in El Paso County must be counted, even children and babies. Your responses are safe and required by law to be kept confidential.
Hi, this is Commissioner Carlos Leon from Precinct 1. Let's come together and fill out those 2020 census. Together and fearless, we count.
The district attorney invites you to the annual Crime Victims Reading of the Name Ceremony on Sunday, April 19th, beginning at 8:00 a.m. at Yucca Park located at 610 North Yarborough.
You can now watch Commissioners Court Meetings on YouTube. Go to youtube.com and search for "El Paso County Commissioners" or "El Paso County, Texas." Subscribe to our channels to see our latest videos.
Did you know the County of El Paso's Purchasing Department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the matter required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contract in return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the purchasing department is responsible for the tracking of inventory within the county and properly disposing surplus to public auctions. For questions about how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts, or to learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346 District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for this specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director, at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information.
Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
All county offices will be closed on Tuesday, March 31st in observance of the Cesar Chavez holiday. All county offices will reopen on Wednesday, April 1st, 2020.
Hi, this is County Judge Salmaniego. The 2020 census count is incredibly important for El Paso. It helps our school, healthcare, food and housing programs get the money they need.
This is County Commissioner Vince Betis for Precinct 3. With your participation, the programs that support affordable housing, public education, and affordable healthcare can receive the funding they deserve.
This is Commissioner Carl Robinson, Precinct 4. Without you, these programs could not be successful.
This is Commissioner David Stout. Participate online, by phone, or by mail. Everyone in El Paso County must be counted, even children and babies. Your responses are safe and required by law to be kept confidential.
Hi, this is Commissioner Carlos Leon from Precinct 1. Let's come together and fill out those 2020 census. Together and fearless we count.
The District Attorney invites you to the annual Crime Victims Reading of the Name Ceremony on Sunday, April 19th, beginning at 8:00 a.m. at Yucca Park located at 610 North Yarborough. The memorial will honor those who have lost their life due to crime.
The County of El Paso Public Works Department is offering sandbags at no cost or requirements to the public. The sandbags are outside of the facilities and are available 24 hours a day. The location of the county facilities are the following. The Road and Bridge Fabens Warehouse located at 1331 North Fabens Street in Fabens, Texas, 79838. The Road and Bridge Canotillo Warehouse located at 191 Canotillo Avenue in Canotillo, Texas, 79835. And the Road and Bridge Montana Warehouse located at 14698 Van Lane, El Paso, Texas, 79938.
Don't wait in line, pay online. to make your payments online or find out more about our kiosk locations. We now accept payments on misdemeanor felony and justice of the peace cases.
You can now watch Commissioners' Court Meetings on YouTube. Go to youtube.com and search for "El Paso County Commissioners" or "El Paso County, Texas." Subscribe to our channels to see our latest videos.
Did you know the County of El Paso's Purchasing Department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the manner required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contracting return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the Purchasing Department is responsible for the tracking of inventory within the county and properly disposing surplus to public auctions. For questions about how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts, or to learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346th District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for the specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director, at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information.
Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the Purchasing Department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the Purchasing Department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346th District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for the specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director, at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information.
Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the Purchasing Department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the Purchasing Department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346th District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for the specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director, at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information.
Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the Purchasing Department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the Purchasing Department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346th District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for the specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director, at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information.
Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the Purchasing Department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the Purchasing Department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346th District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for the specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director, at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information.
Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the Purchasing Department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the Purchasing Department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346th District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for the specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director, at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information.
Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the Purchasing Department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the Purchasing Department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346th District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for the specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director, at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information.
Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the Purchasing Department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the Purchasing Department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346th District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for the specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director, at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information.
Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the Purchasing Department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the Purchasing Department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346th District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for the specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director, at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information.
Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the Purchasing Department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the Purchasing Department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346th District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for the specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director, at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information.
Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the Purchasing Department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the Purchasing Department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346th District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for the specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director, at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information.
Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the Purchasing Department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the Purchasing Department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346th District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for the specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director, at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information.
Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the Purchasing Department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the Purchasing Department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346th District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for the specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director, at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information.
Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the Purchasing Department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the Purchasing Department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346th District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for the specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director, at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information.
Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the Purchasing Department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the Purchasing Department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346th District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for the specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director, at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information.
Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the Purchasing Department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the Purchasing Department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346th District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for the specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director, at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information.
Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the Purchasing Department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the Purchasing Department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346th District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for the specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director, at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information.
Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the Purchasing Department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the Purchasing Department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346th District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for the specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director, at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information.
Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the Purchasing Department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the Purchasing Department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346th District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for the specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director, at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information.
Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the Purchasing Department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the Purchasing Department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346th District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for the specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director, at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information.
Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the Purchasing Department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the Purchasing Department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346th District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and
All county offices will be closed on Tuesday, March 31st in observance of the Cesar Chavez holiday. All county offices will reopen on Wednesday, April 1st, 2020.
Hi, this is County Judge Salmaniego. The 2020 census count is incredibly important for El Paso. It helps our school, healthcare, food and housing programs get the money they need.
This is County Commissioner Vince Perez for Precinct 3. With your participation, the programs that support affordable housing, public education, and affordable healthcare can receive the funding they deserve.
This Commissioner called L. Robinson, Precinct 4. Without you, these programs could not be successful.
This is Commissioner David Stout. Participate online, by phone, or by mail. Everyone in El Paso County must be counted, even children and babies. Your responses are safe and required by law to be kept confidential.
Hi, this is Commissioner Carlos Leon from Precinct 1. Let's come together and fill out those 2020 census. Together and fearless we count.
The District Attorney invites you to the annual Crime Victims Reading of the Name Ceremony on Sunday, April 19th, beginning at 8:00 a.m. at Yucca Park located at 610 North Yarborough. The memorial will honor those who have lost their life due to crime.
The County of El Paso Public Works Department is offering sandbags at no cost or requirements to the public. The sandbags are outside of the facilities and are available 24 hours a day. The location of the county facilities are the following. The Roden Bridge Fabians Warehouse located at 1331 North Fabians Street in Fabians, Texas, 79838. The Roden Bridge Canotillo Warehouse located at 191 Canotillo Avenue in Canotillo, Texas, 79835. And the Roden Bridge Montana Warehouse located at 14698 Vanley, El Paso, Texas, 79938.
Don't wait in line, pay online. Visit the Financial Recovery Division website at http://www.epcounty.com/budget/financialrecovery.html to make your payments online or find out more about our kiosk locations. We now accept payments on misdemeanor felony and justice of the peace cases.
You can now watch Commissioners Court meetings on YouTube. Go to youtube.com and search for "El Paso County Commissioners" or "El Paso County, Texas." Subscribe to our channels to see our latest videos.
Did you know the County of El Paso's Purchasing Department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the matter required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contracting return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the Purchasing Department is responsible for the tracking of inventory within the county and properly disposing surplus to public auctions. For questions about how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts, or to learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346 District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for this specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sova Serna, Veterans Program Director at 915-546-2119, or email her at scserna@epcounty.com for any information.
Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the Purchasing Department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the Purchasing Department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
Commissioners Court has re-convened to regular open session. We'd like to go ahead and take item number 19, receive a presentation, and discuss and take appropriate action regarding an amendment to the Chapter 381 Economic Development Agreement with Kierkegaard Inc., contract number 20200083.
Good afternoon, Judge Commissioners Andrea Hutchins with the Economic Development Department. We're here today to discuss a potential amendment to a Chapter 381 agreement between El Paso County and Kierkegaard Inc. This agreement was entered into in December of 2018 and was supposed to be for the hiring of 19 full-time employees with salaries not below $28,000 a year. The total grant package was in the amount of $32,600, a portion of which was for proprietary and non-proprietary training, and these are technology positions located in downtown El Paso. Currently, the company has 11 employees total, six full-time and five temporary, that the company is hoping to make full-time employees. They have acted on good faith by letting the office know well in advance that they were not going to make their required 19 employees, at which time they did ask for an extension on their 381 grant submission package. Economic Development is recommending that we do make an amendment to their initial Chapter 381 agreement extending their initial grant period from December 5th, 2019 to December 5th, 2020, to give them the time to hire the additional eight employees required per the Chapter 381 agreement. This will not create any additional fiscal impact for the Chapter 381 agreement in total. And just kind of as a reminder overview, again, these positions are, there's 19 total, the salary, minimum salary is $28,000 per year, and the total grant package is in $32,600.
Motion to extend?
Second.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Salmaniego?
Aye.
And just to clarify for the amendment, just to make sure that we got it on the record, it's the, it's the extension as reflected in the amendment to this 381 economic development agreement.
Yes.
Yes, sir, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Drew.
Item number 16, discuss and take appropriate action regarding the Government Affairs Manager.
Judge Commissioners, I would be asking the court to consider a motion to approve establishing an alternate pay grade structure of P-20 or A-3 for the Government Affairs Manager position dependent on the qualifications of the person hired.
Remove.
Take it. Choose whichever one you want. You choose.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson? Judge Salmaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 17, discuss and take appropriate action regarding the proposed acquisition of property within Campbell addition downtown area city of El Paso, Texas. For this item, there is no action. Item number 18, discuss and take appropriate action by the Commissioners Court regarding El Paso County Criminal Justice Coordination Department's pre-trial services program. No action for item number 18, and this completes all the items on today's agenda, Judge.
Meeting adjourned.
This concludes today's meeting at 2:29 p.m.